Excellent. Well, today is April 13th, 2021, and our is our city council work session that I am calling to order. And just so everyone knows, the city council may vote to go into executive session for legal advice on anything on this agenda. Who should we have for pledgeable agents this time around? Let's do Vice Mayor Daggett. Would you honor us in leading the pledge?
Yes, thank you. Stand as you are able. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And let's go for Councilmember Solis. Would you like to state our mission statement?
Thank you, Mayor. The mission of the City of Flagstaff is to protect and enhance the quality of life for all.
Thank you, Councilmember. Roll call, please.
Mayor Deezee.
Here.
Vice Mayor Daggett.
Here.
Councilmember Aslan.
I'm here.
Councilmember McCarthy.
Here.
Councilmember Solis.
I'm fully present via Teams.
Councilmember Shimonie.
Here.
Councilmember Sweet.
Present.
All right, Ms. Pobar, do we have anyone for the general public participation?
Mayor, we do not.
All right, now agenda item number five, which is the review of draft agenda for the April 20th, 2021 city council meeting. Council, do you have any questions, concerns regarding the draft agenda next week? I want to put it on my chat box here. And I'm not seeing anything, which will bring us right to proclamation time, agenda item number six, which is our fair housing month. Whereas federal laws ensure full and fair access to housing opportunities, and whereas April 2021 marks the 53rd anniversary of the Fair Housing Act, and whereas people must not be denied equal access to and enjoyment of housing because of race, color, national origin, religion, sex, disability, or familial status. And whereas the City of Flagstaff recognizes and values the efforts of those who seek to reduce barriers to full and fair housing opportunities. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Paul J. Deezee, Mayor of the City of Flagstaff, Arizona, do hereby proclaim April 2021 as Fair Housing Month. And that brings us to agenda item number seven, which is Moonshot at Northern Arizona Center for Entrepreneurship and Technology, NASAT Annual Update. Take it away.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council. I'm Dave McIntyre, your Community Investment Director. The item before you is an annual update from Moonshot at NASAT regarding the work they do to support and develop entrepreneurship in Flagstaff and the surrounding areas. As you know, but for the benefit of the public, the city owns two facilities on Innovation Mesa, which are used for business incubation and acceleration and are named for those purposes. One of them is also our primary emergency operations center when needed. Moonshot at NASAT is contracted by the city to manage the properties to best serve and support entrepreneurship and business development while maintaining compliance with the Economic Development Administration and city requirements. Moonshot provides mentoring, business development opportunities, and other services, which you'll hear about shortly as well. The city partners with Moonshot to provide additional business development initiatives beyond their contracted efforts each year. And one example of this type of partnership is the Innovate Waste Challenge. In the current model of property management for these buildings, the city pays for operational costs and maintenance, costs such as utilities, and receives the lease revenues from the tenants to assist in funding the program. This is the third year of a five-year renewable contract. And before I introduce Scott Hathcock, President and CEO of Moonshot at NASAT, I'd like to play a brief video for you today.
For Flagstaff in Northern Arizona, mark your calendars and join me, Scott Hathcock, and our Moonshot team on December 7th as we kick off Moonshot at NASAT's first-ever virtual event, Makers and Shakers.
Sky fan maneuver has started, about 20 meters off the surface.
Tango Delta, nominal.
Touchdown confirmed. Perseverance peacefully on the surface of Mars, ready to begin seeking the sands of past life.
And with that, I'd like to introduce Scott Hathcock, President and CEO of Moonshot at NASAT. Scott?
Now can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for, thank you, David McIntyre, for introducing me. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council. It's an honor to stand here in front of you virtually. I hope you guys enjoy that video. I know that every time I've seen it in the last few days or the last couple of weeks, I continue to be inspired as well, even though we created it from inside our own team. I want to, for virtue of slowing things down for a bit, I want to go back and have David McIntyre, if he would, pull up our local impact slides just so I could talk through some of those numbers in case if you have any questions. Also, I would like to suggest to the public viewing or anytime anybody wants to view that video, it is available on our website. So you can reach us, you can watch that video on our website at moonshotaz.com. So regarding our local impact, if you'll click to the next slide, David. Moonshot NASAT Campus from a total investment funds. These numbers again are just reflected of the companies we work with here in Flagstaff that are situated on our NASAT campus. And total investment funds are essentially any funds that our companies have received through grants, through PPP, through loans in general. As you can see, in 2020, due to COVID, that number drastically went down from the previous year in 2019 of the 3.4 million. But in 2021, already in the first quarter of this year, we've almost, we've essentially gone beyond the half mark of where we were in 2019. So we're already at 1.7 million. And that's just from Q1 of 2021. So again, these are investment funds that we have received, that our companies have received from the companies on our campus. Next slide, please. This slide essentially is the same thing, speaks to the companies on the Flagstaff campus, on the NASAT campus. In 2019, the companies that are on our campus generated 5.6 million in revenue. And in 2020, we hit 4.7, so not that under where we were before, but we continue to see an increase. The market's trending up. We're seeing new companies come in, so we will imagine that 2021 will actually beat 2019's revenue-generated goals. Next slide, please. From a job standpoint, again, these are, once again, campus total jobs. In 2019, our companies retained 259 jobs from 2018, and they created 44 new jobs. Then in 2020, we retained 298 jobs from 2019 and created 10 new jobs. And again, because of the increase in companies we're seeing coming on board and even expansion of the current companies, we anticipate this number to go up as well in 2021. Next slide, please. So currently, our occupancy rates for both buildings total 62%. Our incubator is at 91%, and our accelerator is at 53.3%. As far as new tenants are concerned from this past year, we've seen several come in. I want to especially draw your attention to the ones that I believe you guys had guessed on a couple of weeks back. One being Be Well, which won the challenge put forth through our last December event, as well as Catalyst Technologies, which is the new company that I like to say does telehealth for space satellites. So we're thrilled to have these two in there especially. I might also draw your attention to Elevated Manufacturing. This is a company that came out of Dr. Rob Keller's previous company. And so we're again seeing a lot of expansion and some pivots throughout some of our companies. But if you guys ever have any questions on any of these companies and what they do, once again, you can go to the moonshotaz.com client directory, and you can read about what they do here in Flagstaff. Next slide. From a thousand-foot looking down, coming up event sort of calendar for this year, next slide, please, David. We are planning on launching our first-ever high school hire summer day camp. This is with the acknowledgement and hopefully the movement going toward more public events that we could do a high school summer high, higher. This is going to be a day camp, one in the morning, one in the afternoon. Essentially, we're going to be training high schoolers about how to get a job, teaching them some soft skills as well as some skills around resume building, the platforms you seek to find a job, with the intent, with the hope that our high schoolers are going to be more well-prepared to enter the job market. We are still looking for a sponsorship for this. We think we'll be doing one in June and then one closer to the fall, to the fall season of high school. Next slide, please. This program I'm especially excited about, we actually did this as a pilot program with NAU. And based on the success of the pilot, as well as the communication we've received throughout the state of Arizona, we hit upon something that obviously needed to be fulfilled from a gap standpoint in workforce development. So in this case, we turned up colleges. Specifically, we worked with the Frankie School of Business, School of Hospitality, and the School of Engineering. The deans and the program directors in those situations provided us with a list of students, primarily juniors and seniors. And we actually took the juniors and seniors through our Track One program so they could better understand what a founder does, what a startup founder does, or has to learn, or needs to build in order to bring together a successful startup. What's interesting with this program is because they weren't actually building new companies, we took the information they were learning and had them apply it to themselves from a professional development standpoint. So again, we are working with workforce development. We're training them on how to enter the marketplace. We're utilizing our same core values of founder, those values that we teach a founder regarding, you know, what is your why? What is your value proposition? How you utilize the business canvas? In order for them to, again, better position themselves for work. I have to say that of the 12 students that we had in the program, we have roughly 10 companies seeking to employ them right now. And so we see this program continuing. We've already talked to the Frankie School of Business. I know we're going to be rolling something out in the fall. We don't know what that looks like yet, but we do know that we have created something that there is a great demand for. Next slide, please, David. We Mean Business continues. This is a program we started two years ago. This is a women's leadership and entrepreneurial event that meets regularly, used to meet in person. But again, due to the COVID-19 virus, we moved that to a virtual standpoint, and they in fact had one this morning. So it's beginning to pick up again with more in-person meetings. I think this morning's event included nine in-person attendees and roughly 10 or so virtually. So this will continue, and we will continue to grow in this program. We will most likely be bringing back the Women's Speaker Series, which was a live event we did. And we're probably looking to bring that back in fourth quarter, which kind of accompanies this networking event. Next slide, please, David. All right, so that's it. That's mainly what I had to offer today. I know we probably have some questions. I do want to call attention to our 2021 board, which was incredible this year, as well as the Moonshot staff, given all the obstacles we had to cross and get around due to COVID. They include David Johns with W O Gore, Nathan Friedman with W O Gore, Todd Davis, who is retired from Choice Hotels, Dan Kasperzick from Pova Medical Simple Surgical, John Kalnitch retired from Deckers Outdoor, Catherine Romero, who's founder of Rocket Digital. And then as of last night, we formally added Stephanie Parotti, who is the former licensing for the Property Brothers, as well as Frank Lloyd Wright. On top of these board members that have carried us through and helped us with this last past year, I also want to say a special thank you to our Moonshot staff. We're lean, we're mean. They include Amanda Kristinett, Angela Hamby, Dana White, and Kirsten Hack. Are there any questions? Thank you, Scott. I had one question here. So what proportion of the facility is incubator and what proportion accelerator? So the, that's a great question. So when I, when I came on board, the incubator was named incubator and accelerator was named accelerator with the purpose of having people move from a smaller space to a larger space, if you will. So the accelerator part of that, of those terminology meant essentially that a client who did not want that much square footage would go to the incubator first. We also supplied furniture for that space and general utilities. For the accelerator, you're looking at oftentimes no furniture that we're providing, but just larger spaces. So the question you're asking is how many of the companies that are possibly in the incubator would be considered accelerator companies? Or what do you mean regarding the? Yeah, well, I was mainly looking, when I was looking at the slides there, that you had 91% filled for accelerator and 51% on the slide for, so I was just kind of curious what, yeah, A, what's the real distinction here? As well as what proportion of the facility is for the, you know, real, the startup to the startup kind of situation as opposed to those that are, have a foothold? Sure. So, yeah, so the incubator is actually the one that's more filled. It's the smaller spaces. Those tend to be more incubator startup companies. The accelerator, which is, I think, is at 60-something percent, is the one that's the larger rooms, the larger spaces. And typically, those companies that are there tend to be in the accelerator. They've been in business for three to five years. They've expanded. They have a larger staff, which means they need a larger place to work. But we do have some companies that split between the two buildings just because of the facilities and what each facility has to offer and just their needs. So that's the great thing about what the city has to offer is because it's organic, if you will, in the way it can assist companies. And so during a time like COVID, with armored outdoor gears need to pivot to make PPP, or PP, I'm sorry, PPE, that we actually were able to move them into another manufacturing suite so they could add more staff for the demand at the time. Does that answer your question? Yeah, it does. Thank you. Council, do I have any questions this time or comments? Councilmember Sweet, followed by Councilmember Shimonie.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Scott, for the presentation. I can't get my camera on, so I apologize. A question, do you have partnerships with local businesses for the high school hire summer day camp and the intern certification? And if so, how do businesses who may want to get involved in that find out more information?
Wonderful. So for the NAU intern certification program that we piloted this year, what we found, what we're trying to do is we're going to start collecting a database of these students. And as, and anyone, company-wise, local businesses or company-wise, or across Arizona, if they're interested in hiring an intern, these can be for paid, unpaid, they can be for contract work, part-time work, whatever, can reach out to us and we can tell you who's in the pool of students that we have, where their primary studies lie, not that that needs to go directly into a job. And so we can help you make those connections. So again, with this being a pilot, I have not released any press regarding this. Our plan is to release a case study after this summer when we can talk about the people that were placed because of the program and announce the fall season so people can be ready for that new allotment of students for hire. For the high school hire, however, and thank you for asking me, because I am actually planning on reaching out to you as well. We are, we're actually planning on creating a job fair at the end of the high school camp week where potentially community stakeholders and people who would be interested in hiring high schoolers could come to the NASAT campus. And the high school students would be, will be standing in the main conference room. We'll have sort of a job fair open for possibly half a day, five hours or so, where general public can come through and the, and the high school students can present their resume and what their special skills are. So as soon as we have all the details about that, I'll be coming to you, Miranda specifically, if you don't mind, because I'm interested in getting feedback from local, from local shops who possibly would be interested in hiring, because I would love to have some guest speakers speak to the types of things you're looking for as an employer.
Thank you for answering the questions, and I would love to become part of that. And I'm assuming other small businesses as well, so thank you.
Thank you. You, Councilmember Shimonie.
Thank you, Mayor, and hi, Scott. Thanks for joining us. Thanks for the presentation. And yes, thank you to your board and your staff and everyone involved in your efforts for your work this past year and your work moving forward. Very exciting to hear about the trends moving forward. Mayor, my questions were similar to yours in the accelerator category, being at 53%. I just wonder, Scott, you know, your thoughts on how we can build that number up and build that residency up to just make what is that you're doing and providing to the community a real thriving effort that there isn't any open space, that there's a waiting list, and we have to build upon it. What are your thoughts?
Sure. So prior to COVID, again, we were around 70-something percent and increasing. So again, I just saw COVID for us as a little speed bump, because we, obviously, we lost some companies during that time. Either they didn't need offices anymore, they could retreat to their homes, or the companies simply went out of business. So I think it's going to be just a continuation. It goes back to the work that the board does and the staff does of creating events. Fortunately, we were able to do a lot of virtual events this year. We were able to pivot very quickly. And because of those events, we saw outside companies even decide to move to Flagstaff, like Catalyst Space Technologies. So this next week, in fact, we're doing a boot camp called the Business of Bio Boot Camp. And that Business of Bio Boot Camp is statewide, meaning that if you are a founder of a bio company, you can participate in this boot camp. However, the idea of this boot camp is also to showcase what it is Flagstaff has to offer. And so by doing those types of things, the idea is not only to grow our own here, but also to attract additional talent and companies for us to help, because we do have great facilities, and it's a matter of just telling more people about them.
That's great. And, you know, I really love what you're doing with all your workforce development with high schoolers and college kids. I think that, like you said, you know, of the 12 students, 10 are already being hired, I believe, or placed. And there's just so much, in my opinion, room to grow with that. And I'm just very excited to hear about the successes on that topic. Scott, you know, this might be a conversation offline, but I just wonder what kind of help you and NASAT can do in regards to filling some of our commercial spaces, specifically some that are part of some of the higher-density projects in town. I'm sure where are those commercial spaces. Do you have any thoughts on that without getting too into the weeds?
I just think what we try to do is we try to let the city know, specifically John Saltensall and his department. Whenever we see a company that's starting to even entertain the idea of moving out, you know, we start putting them in touch with those folks that possibly know where new growth can be gained and what the possibilities are for those commercial properties. So that, I mean, I would say that's my first go-to. I come to the city and I say, hey, here's, here are a couple of people. What ideas do you guys have and where can they head to?
Okay, two last quick questions, Mayor. With Whitehall Industries coming to Flag, which is a huge success, and I'm very, very excited about that, I just wonder what kind of building we can do off of that type of an industry? You know, other electric vehicle parts partnership was Tesla. You know, obviously with EV really being a growing field, what, how can we capitalize on that momentum?
So I love that. I love that. They're coming into town. What we need and what they help us provide is an anchor tenant for a sector. So if you look at where our sectors already exist, we have W O Gore, they're our main anchor for bio, right? And you've got, I know I've lost my train of thought, but you've got this entire hospitality school with NAU, and that helps us with our hospitality sector. You've got manufacturing, so you have companies like Purina and Joycom that help us anchor in manufacturing. So when you have a company like Whitehall that exists, you will have problems that need to be solved around the sector work that they're doing and from their employees and from people who are vendors for that company will come up with new solutions that can actually be creating, started new companies, essentially. So I think when Whitehall comes in, the first thing we're going to want to do from a Moonshot standpoint is forge a relationship with them and says, you know, that says, what do you need? You know, what do you need workforce development-wise? And what are some of the problems that you see that exist in your sector? And how could we potentially solve these problems with entrepreneurs? So essentially, that's what we do with all these guys. We say, you know, what is it you're looking for? What is it you need? And then we try to help them connect the dots, because we might already have some founders that exist on the campus that could benefit or help or start new companies based on Whitehall's needs.
That's great. And my last comment and question is, just with Prop 207 passing, the recreational use of marijuana, I just wonder, from your lens and your perspective, what economic development and opportunity do you see with that locally?
We had, unfortunately, we had a company that ended up failing or went under, but we had a manufacturing company that was manufacturing LED lights. And obviously, for their first big client, they were, they were the greenhouses. You know, we personally are not opposed to working with companies that provide manufacturing equipment or those types of needs. I think that, you know, if it's, if it's legal, then we should pursue the, you know, the companies that can help us grow that particular sector if that is in the interest of the city. But again, with us, when we take on new clients, all of our new clients are approved by the city, actually, before they can enter the campus, at least from the campus. And so we are pretty, we're pretty transparent when it comes to, here's somebody that's interested in moving here. And so we are pretty, we're pretty transparent when it comes to here's somebody that's interested in moving here or working here, you know. Um, will this be okay with the with the city legal team?
Great. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Your council member, uh Mr. McIntyre has come in.
Yeah, I just wanted to to mention that these buildings, and I believe it it came up briefly earlier, but the buildings are actually funded uh to some extent, in part part by the Economic Development Administration, which is federal funding. And so we do um, we are fairly careful with what with making sure that we're abiding by all federal regulations and federal laws. So while grow lights themselves and things like that are certainly appropriate, and we're excited to see that kind of technology, um I did wanna make it clear that that anything that uh might be legal in a state but not necessarily legal to the federal government is something that we take very seriously and making sure that we're complying with those EDA regulations. And I didn't wanna um make too much of that point, but I I did wanna just clarify that there are some fine lines. We we walk there. We wanna encourage entrepreneurship and obviously work with uh the laws of Arizona. But but because there's federal funding involved, we do play that fairly conservatively. Thank you.
Thank you for helping with that answer, too, David.
No problem.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I'm not seeing uh any other comments or questions in the chat box. So I appreciate all your hard work. That video was awesome, by the way. So, yeah, it's good. Oh, sorry, Councilmember Solis has a question here.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I would like to send a big grateful thankful heart to Mr. Hathcock and his team at Moonshot. Thank you all for all, everything you do for 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 our community and for for our economy, not only not only in Flagstaff, but reaching out throughout Northern Arizona. Um, I mean, I I I am I am enthused in into, you know, building up on this uh this programs that you're introducing this year, the high school hire and the intern certification in terms of workforce development. Um, I also happen to be on the county workforce development board, so looking at the regional um uh strategies in in um developing and creating our skilled workforce that um currently is currently needed now and uh uh future needs for a talent pipeline. Um, I'm just refreshing my memory, and I think it was in the last uh moonshot presentation to the previous council, and this was before COVID. I do recall you had some programs with the, um, of course, your Center for Entrepreneurship, right? So about social entrepreneurship, I think, and please correct me if I'm wrong. I remember you had some kind of services or resources available to nonprofits in terms of um social entre- entrepreneurship. Can you speak to that?
Sure. So actually, that is still owned. That was a grant that Paul Thomas received. And that nonprofit center is actually under NAU's umbrella. So we don't, although we have tracks and our tracks will totally work for nonprofits, if you're looking for the nonprofit center of Northern Arizona, that's now under NAU's or under NAU's campus, if you will.
Okay, yeah, so definitely reach out to Mr. Thomas. So it's like I was, I remember I was kind of following following the path similar to the ASU uh Low Star Center for Nonprofit and Philanth- Philanthropy.
Correct.
Or the the non- nonprofit management institute track. Okay, thank you.
So but I will, let me say this again. If we do have tracks and our tracks, um, be it, you know, when you come to your financials and and sometimes even um, obviously, the way your organization is is built, you'll have some changes and variance, but the tracks of doing good business as a as a startup are not diff- are not different, right? So we can still host and 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 bring in nonprofit founders. And at times, if we have enough of them, we put them into one class and then speak just to that track. But regarding the um nonprofit center, that's actually in a U now.
Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you for the kind words.
Well, that looks to uh be wrapping it up, so thank you again for your time and uh the great presentation.
Thank you so much. Enjoyed it. Have a great evening.
You, too. All right, that brings us to agenda item number eight, which is the discussion on public notice of a possible primary property tax levy increase. Uh, city staff, take it away.
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Rick Tatter, Management Service Director uh for the City of Flagstaff. Uh, tonight, we have a little discussion and um some conversation about posting a possible notice of a primary property tax increase. Uh, as council is aware, we have two types of property taxes. One of us is a primary tax, and that is funds that go into the city's general fund for operations. Uh, it's generally unrestricted for use. And this is a rate that our councils uh decide on and set the rates uh for the revenues we wanna collect. The other one is a secondary property tax. Uh, we're not gonna discuss that tonight, but at the council retreat, we will have a little bit of discussion on that. But that is a uh secondary property tax levy to pay debt service on general obligation bonds uh for projects that voters approved. Uh, I wanted to take a little bit of opportunity tonight to just give a little bit of education on primary property taxes and then uh pose a question for council about posting a notice. First off, there's a few statutes. Uh, this is just a couple of them. Uh, this is not all related to property taxes or primary property taxes, but uh these are ones that help lead our discussion today. The first one uh sets the restriction on how much our property tax levy for primary property tax can increase on an annual basis. Uh, it's a two percent annual increase plus any new construction that's been added to our property tax rolls. Uh, the two percent accumulates each year. If we do not use the two percent, the next year we have four and so on. Um, but that's the limit of what is allowed to set our our levies. The next statute uh defines the the process uh that the city must take in order to approve a levy increase or a tax rate uh for additional revenues uh for primary property tax. Uh, this generally starts in May uh prior to the adoption of the budget. And it's a, it's a pretty strict and transparent process that includes advertising or no local paper as well as a public hearing for people to uh join in and and talk about our a consideration of the levy increase. And then the last one is is kind of the reasons we're here today is uh we do have a a requirement to post a sixty-day notice uh if we are increasing taxes or fees. Um, there's certain requirements within here. Uh, it is unclear to us whether a levy is considered an increase by the statute, but as a precaution in the past, we've been posting this sixty-day notice uh just to fulfill that requirement and not have a a challenge possibly in the future. Uh, this one is is a pretty simple process where we post on our city website and we put out information on social media. Next is is kind of the structure or anatomy of our property taxes for the City of Flagstaff. So the primary property tax um is really a pyramid of of items that creates um the rate, the levy, and the evaluations. So starting on the the left-hand side of this pyramid is the tax levy. Levy is also considered revenue uh for the City of Flagstaff. Council can determine how much of the levy uh we want to impose uh for each year we adopt a tax within the limits of the constant, the the statutes of that two percent maximum uh for the revenues we want to bring in for the operations. Then we have the assessed valuations, uh and this is a county assessor's uh function. Uh, they set these on an annual basis. We'll talk about this on the next slide. And when you take the revenues divided by your net assessed valuations, that backs into the rate you need to adopt as a city council to bring in those revenues. Uh, that's kind of how the pyramid uh structure works with this. Uh, really, council controls the the revenues and tax rates while the county controls the assessed values. So net assessed value, um property values, uh like I said, is determined by the county assessor's office. It is based, you know, for the text you're coming up, it's based on valuations that were made by the assessor's office in late two thousand nineteen. Uh, they give the properties owners an opportunity to um, you know, provide for, you know, arguments of why their assessment should not go up so much or the valuation should not uh increase. Uh, it's an open period for that um appeal process. And then almost a year and a half later is when the assessed value is actually taxed upon for two thousand twenty-one. There's two types of assessed valuations. One is limited and one is full cash value. Uh, the assessor determines that full cash value uh during the process. But the limited assessed value is what is used to calculate um what we'll bring in for our levies based on our rates for both primary and secondary property tax. The difference is that the limited assessed valuation can only increase annually by a maximum of five percent. Uh, meaning, you know, if property values are growing faster in our community, it's gonna be capped annually at five percent, and that is what's utilized when we set those assessments uh by the assessor for that tax year. Um, this year, we do have a bit of new construction on our books. We have about a one point three percent of our gain is related to new construction, or twelve million dollars of uh construction has been added to our property values this year. Uh, so that's the portion above and beyond the two percent that we're allowed. On the bottom of the slide shows the differences between a limited cash, a limited net assessed value and the full cash values. A limited will always be below that full cash value. And like I said, that is what we calculate, uh what our levies and rates will be based on um for the City of Flagstaff. This year, overall, um, the net assessed values increased by almost six percent for the City of Flagstaff, a taxing district. Uh, so as mentioned, the city council uh determines the rate uh that we want to use to match the levy we want to gain uh for our operations on an annual basis. Uh, the city council has many options. Uh, approving a flat levy, meaning let's bring in the same revenue plus new construction as we have in the past. You also have the opportunity to decrease the tax rate or levy or increase the levy up to that maximum uh allowable limit. Uh, impacts of property owners vary. It's not always the same percentage impact for every property. It's based on how their assessed valuations change uh from year to year. The table here uh shows what um potential rates we could adopt as a City of Flagstaff. Um, and again, we're not looking for direction to adopt rates. This is something that's done in a later process. So currently, in our current fiscal year, uh council adopted a a rate of point seven five one zero, uh which brought in about seven million dollars in revenues for our general fund. Uh, we did not take advantage or we did not assess the additional two percent levy last year. Uh, so you'll see down below, we're, our maximum now is a four percent. What the council chose last year was to adopt a flat levy plus any new construction that has been brought onto the tax rolls. Uh, when we do this type of a levy, we do not have to do a truth and taxation, nor do we have to do a sixty-day notice, uh some of those statutes that I mentioned early on uh in the process. Uh, so if our choice this year is to do uh this flat levy, the rate would be point seven one eight six and bring in just over seven million dollars in property tax revenues uh to the city. The change is that um new construction, about eighty-six thousand in new construction is added to the books. And this last one is is the maximum. This is just the cap. You can adopt anything below this rate, um, all the way down to zero if if chosen. Um, the maximum allowed right now is a four percent levy increase. Uh, this would require the truth and taxation process to be adopted. Anything between the flat levy and this four percent would require both of these notices, uh the sixty-day notice and truth and taxation. And that's kind of the question of why we are here today, to see if you want to put that notice in, in case you wanted that flexibility in your budget discussions. Uh, doing the max levy brings in almost three hundred thousand additional dollars above the flat levy uh consideration, uh just for your information. So uh for informationally, uh city manager's budget, uh that we've worked with the budget team over the last several months is in as a flat levy proposition. We are not looking for a levy increase what we're proposing. Uh, just to note again, any primary property tax goes to general fund for basically an unrestricted use uh for general fund operations in support of our our city. During the council, during the April retreat is when we're gonna have a conversation about what we wanna adopt in our budgets for next year. And council could give direction that they would like to increase a levy to fund something in addition to what the city manager has proposed and something they may desire to have funded in an ongoing basis. Uh, that option is yours. The posting of a notice does not require us to do a levy increase. It's really just a notification to uh the community that it's being considered. If we go through this process, uh we can add the language as needed to explain this is just a notification. Uh, there may not be any tax levy increases. Uh, please join us at the the April budget retreats for the conversation uh or watch for in June uh for a potential increase. Uh, so the question uh we have for you today, and and first I'm gonna explain the why we're asking this question. Uh, the budget team thought it was appropriate to come to you as city council uh to determine whether we want to post a sixty-day notice uh to the public. Uh, this is the one that goes on our website and out to social media. Uh, the reason is, we didn't want to assume, you did not want that ability during the April retreat to talk about the capacity and utilize that. Uh, we didn't wanna make that assumption for you and limit and tie your hands to possibly what you could do uh and direct staff uh for the budget. Uh, but we also understand that, you know, this would be a public notification. It does create public conversation, which is okay. It's a transparent process that we do adopt. So those are the kind of reasons we're here and asking you this question. Um, of does the city council want staff to post a sixty-day notice for a possible increase of a primary power property tax levy? And that is all I have for today, and we'll turn it back to you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Tatter. Uh, we do have one uh public comment. Uh, Ms. Fobar, if you'd like to patch in Mr. Finch.
Thank you, Mayor. I have Mr. Steve Finch. Steve, you can go ahead and give your comments now.
Thank you. Uh, well, good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, City Staff. Uh, thank you for giving me the time to speak. Um, looking at the other, we're looking at the other tax increase of the property. Um, we're looking at, you know, at, it's not the same as an increase if this fee was static, you know, such as if you looked at the cost of water, sewer, garbage, or even like a rebuilding permit through a flat fee, you know, which do from time to time have to be reconsidered to, you know, equal the cost to the labor involved by the city to make that uh available. You know, with the property tax, uh though, uh your, the city is every year receiving more and more revenue from the city uh residents without even doing anything. One, I mean, as stated a few months ago, you know, it was just showing uh we have, the construction has increased one point three percent with twelve million dollars in that asset of value, which is taxable revenue that will come to the city. in that asset of value, which is taxable revenue that will come to the city. Along with the fact that you've got even the existing homes and buildings. Do you have that 5% where you can get additional revenue from that? So in essence, the city has, you know, two different ways that the property tax revenue is increasing that you're receiving. One of the things that was commented also last week is we really want to be cautious and do everything we can possibly do to not make Flagstaff another Aspen. You know, if you look at Aspen and those who live, you know, in the city of Aspen or outside, you know, it's kind of where we're, our feeling is where we're driving Flagstaff in the same way. You know, we want to be able to control the cost, keep, you know, the cost down as much as possible. And the fact that the city is receiving additional revenue already from property tax just by not even, you know, changing anything and just, you know, the 5% increase and, you know, the, the additional property. City's getting enough money and our consideration is you should be able to function under those aspects. As I'm understanding what Mr. Tatter said, you know, it sounds like the city is doing okay as is. That it didn't need to be required and we appreciate that, being able to operate within the budget. You know, and especially during, like I said, we're just coming out of the pandemic and construction is one of the things that's been going crazy. Yet, you know, all of our residents have been having to pay out more taxes. And, you know, and you turn around and they've been having to live on less because quite a few people are sitting on unemployment and still are. So we would appreciate the council to consider not increasing the tax and leaving things as status quo. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Finch. Councilmember Solis, was your question of Mr. Finch or Mr. Tatter?
It's for Mr. Tatter, Mayor.
Okay. Well, I'll wait off on that. Thank you. City manager, did you have a comment for this or after we're done with the public commentary?
A comment and a quick one, just to clarify if it has not been emphasized. Our current budget proposal is for a flat levy as Rick has noted. And staff is not advocating for any increase at all. We are just at a at a timing where if, if the, the notice needs to be posted, as Rick mentioned, if there was any idea of entertaining such a question, but I just don't want anybody to confuse the fact that we're here to you to advise you of, of this notice requirement to, to confuse that with any sort of support or advocacy for the tax increase. We at the staff level would be remiss if we did not come to council advising you of this, but that's, is pretty much informative. Thank you.
Thank you, city manager. I think it's time for, thank you, Mr. Finch, if, if he's still on the line. I think we can turn it into the council discussion at this point. So, thank you. Mr. Tatter, has a comment?
I just want to add a comment to the speaker about the city automatically getting additional revenues due to increased property valuations. That's not true. It's really the, the rate that we set that would assess the levies and revenues on the properties. The increase, 5% increase just goes into how we calculate that bottom line and does not automatically bring in revenues. I just wanted to clarify that, that portion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tatter. Councilmember Solis has a question of you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have, I, I'm just curious, the cost, direct and indirect costs associated with the truth and taxation 60-day notice publication.
Oh, I haven't looked at the cost of that yet, but it's, it's two publications. We do it twice in the Arizona Daily Sun. I can't imagine it's more than a couple hundred dollars for each one of those processes, which we do have budget appropriated because we generally do some type of advertising. But I don't have the exact figure for you today. The rest of it is, is really on our website and social media, those types of things.
Councilmember Aslan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I, I want to thank city staff for bringing this, this, this deadline to our attention. It's, it's valuable to know that this, this opportunity is coming and will, will soon pass. I actually do wonder if we should take advantage of posting notice. And without getting into too much detail about this, the reason why involves our ongoing conversations around the reiter flag flood control project and making sure we have maximum flexibility moving forward with that in terms of revenue needed for various strategies that we're entertaining. And I don't want to say too much more about it. But I want to throw that out there.
Thank you, council member. Councilmember Shimon.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Rick, for the presentation. Thank you, Mr. Finch, for your comments. You know, I know that you're listening, Mr. Finch, and then we can't go back and forth, but I just wanted to say that I don't think it's the property taxes that are the issue in the community when it comes to housing. I really think that issue is driven by the market. Hundred percent market-driven issue, not, not a tax property issue, but that's just my opinion, I guess. Rick, am, am I understanding this correctly that if we were to adjust the levy to the maximum 4%, we're still going to see a decrease in the current rate from 0.7510 to 0.7476, resulting in a decrease in property tax on the individual. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's absolutely correct. Okay. Does our total assessed valuations increase? We've got to reduce our rate to stay within that levy. Yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that publicly because, because we're, even if you were to adopt the maximum 4%, increasing the general fund balance by $284,000, folks in the community will still see a decrease, decrease in their primary property tax. So given that, I, I'm, I think that we should move forward with the 60-day notice and in public outreach, just to keep that option on the table. $284,000 can be used in a number of ways, as council member Aslan alluded to. Obviously sustainability. There's so many different ways we can use this money and, 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 you know, Mr. Finch, you know, you, you said the city's not doing anything. And I know we can't go back and forth, but, you know, we're growing. That's what the city is doing and the city is trying to keep up with that growth. And that's a constant struggle. So this, this levy helps us do that and it helps support the general fund. Anyways, those are my comments, Mayor and staff. And yeah, I think we should put the notice out. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. Vice Mayor Duggan.
Thank you so much, Mayor. I will always err on the side of having a discussion. So I do think that we should put out the notification so that we can at least have an informed discussion when it comes time to that.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember McCarthy.
Thank you. I just want to take issue with the discussion that we just had between Mr. Shimon and staff. It's, he made the statement that based on the chart that's on the, the tape on the screen right now, that the tax amount of taxes will be going down if we stay with the flat levy. Actually, I think it'll be staying the same. And the rate will be less than it was in the current year, but the amount of tax will stay the same, neglecting the growth part of it. So, Mr. Tatter, could you comment to that?
Yes, there, there's definitely those two variables, rate versus levy. The rate does have to go down because of the increased assessed values. The impact to the property owners though, may not be a reduction in their tax bill. Because their assessed values may have gone up 5% and we're leveling, levying on that number with the lower rate, we're still probably going to have a higher tax bill. And I was trying to crunch some numbers before I got here to this meeting today, but just in a ballpark figure, and we can talk more about this at the retreat if, if you're, you're interested. On a residential property at a $300,000 value, just it's right about our average on a tax rolls. It would be about a $10 increase their tax bill. If their property increased by 5% and we increase or we set this rate that we have. So that's a perspective of how that would impact a residential type customer. Hope that helps answer.
So the main point is that we adjust the tax levy. And if we keep the levy flat, then the rate is just a calculation between what the assessed values are and those go up and down. So there's no change in the taxes if we keep the levy the same, neglecting growth. Now, obviously the part for growth, that is added income to the city, but it's also added expenses to provide police, fire, et cetera, in those areas. So I think this is very confusing to the public and to council members. And, and historically, I remember council members five years ago that did not understand this. So any other comments on that before I make my next comment, Rick? Nope.
No, you know, each year it really depends on how your individual property changes. Yours could decline, yours could increase. But we're trying to get to that, that level.
What we're talking is on average. My, my, my house might go up in value and the house right next to me might go down in value, but on the average is what we're talking about. So getting to the root question de jour, I do support doing the posting. Now, that doesn't mean I'm going to support a tax levy increase when it comes to the budget time. That's a completely different discussion, but I do support leaving our options open, which means make the notice that we might consider changing the tax levy. That's my comments.
Thank you, council member. Councilmember Sweet.
Thank you, and thank you for the information. I also do think we should post the notice just to be able to have the conversation. I'm with council member McCarthy. It doesn't mean I'm voting one way or another. It just means that I would like to at least have that option. Thank you.
Your council member, councilmember Solis.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. While, while I would appreciate, appreciate future conversation at the budget retreat about this. I'm very mindful about fiscal responsibility and prudent spending. And the current city manager, city manager budget proposal is for a flat levy. And I also am aware that the city is going to receive 15.2 million as part of the American Rescue Plan. And we have freed up the general fund as, you know, as previous council made a, made a deliberate decision to fully fund the PSPRS. So we still have money available in the general fund to, to operate and manage future programs, you know, that we, we would like to, to take up on in the future. So I'm not interested in doing the, the 60-day notice. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Solis. Well, just to weigh in here, I don't, though, I know we have the direction already from staff or from council, rather. I, I don't have interest in putting this, the 60-day notice. We do have these other revenue streams. We're going to have a lot to talk about during the budget session. And, but as we know, we, we have direction from the rest of, of council to move forward with this. Just to state my opinion, I have no interest in increasing property taxes this year. I do, well, actually I do have one question, just so I understand, Mr. Tatter, if we decide to, for example, reduce property taxes, does that still require a 60-day notice?
No.
Okay. So we still have that possibility. So that could be part of the discussion that we have at the budget retreat as well, something that I would like to look into. And what that would entail or what that would mean for our budget. So, well, without further ado, council, do we have any further comment or questions before we move on?
Well, I think. Thank you, Mayor and council. The advertising deadline is, I believe, the 16th, so that'll be going out here shortly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tatter. Well, with that, I'm understanding that there are, they are having some computer issues, technical difficulties in the conference room to run the meeting. So I'd like to take a short break so that way we can figure that out and get back right on it. So let's just do 10 minutes. So at 4:17, we will reconvene and hopefully have those issues taken care of. So, thank you. 4:17. Ms. Fobar, are we still live streaming?
Mayor, we are set and we are live streaming now.
Excellent. Well, thank you all for your patience. We're having some Wi-Fi hiccups at city hall, so we had to get everything hardwired and thank you, Paul Santana, for setting us all up here. So back to it, we are at agenda item number nine, our Flagstaff Municipal Court Overview. Ms. Cortez, I believe, is presenting.
Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council. This is Presiding Magistrate Thomas Shotina. Our court leadership team, with some help from our IT department, has created a PowerPoint presentation to share with you, which is pre-recorded. We will be happy to answer any questions at the end. Our agenda includes Flagstaff Municipal Court mission and vision, budget information, our organizational chart, our two divisions, court operations and court services. We will discuss some of our court events as well as our specialty courts and will finish the presentation with our accomplishments and initiatives. The mission of the employees of the Flagstaff Municipal Court is to foster a positive and productive environment that promotes the efficient and effective administration of justice. Our vision is to provide the public with a court system that fairly and impartially administers justice and efficiently resolves disputes. I will now turn the presentation over to Jessica Cortez, our court administrator.
Thank you, Judge Shotina. For our current fiscal year, the court has a base budget of $875,972. Ongoing funding request of $182,800. One-time funding request of $226,317 for a total budget of $1,285,089. Next is our organizational structure of the court leadership team of the Flagstaff Municipal Court. As you are aware, the Flagstaff City Council has the appointing authority for all of our magistrates. Thomas Shotina, our presiding magistrate, has the responsibility for all operations of the court. Under supervision of the presiding magistrate is my position, the court administrator. I oversee the administrative responsibilities of running the court. In addition to our presiding magistrate, we have two full-time magistrates, James Speed and Amy Criddle. Each judge has judicial responsibility for the cases assigned to them. We also have on-call magistrates who assist with coverage for our full-time magistrates, the weekend and holiday initial appearances and search warrant duties. We then have two deputy court administrators, Heidi Lofgren and Kathleen Harrison. Heidi oversees court operations and Kathy oversees court services. Over the next two slides, they will be providing information on their areas of responsibility. I will now turn the presentation over to Deputy Court Administrator Heidi Lofgren.
Hello. The court operations section includes 10 FTEs consisting of training, IT, security, probation, warrants, collections, and records. probation, warrants, collections and records. I want to provide a bit of information about our team in court operations. On the left side of the organizational chart are the intergovernmental agreements with Coconino County to provide shared services. The court's training department is comprised of one court training specialist who is responsible for providing required training to judicial employees in all nine courts throughout Coconino County so that they can provide a high level of service to our customers. The court's IT department includes two court information systems coordinators, and they handle court-specific IT projects, help desk functions, and ensure network hardware and software requirements are met for all courts within Coconino County. They play a huge role in court technology initiatives and serve as our representative on the Supreme Court's Technology Advisory Committee. Additionally, under IT is the Criminal Justice Integration Intergovernmental Agreement. And this agreement provides for the exchange of criminal justice information to the courts from other justice partners, which eliminates duplicate data entry, maintains accurate records and also supports the implementation of automation and workflows for efficient operations. Next, we have our bailiffs who provide security services in the court facility, making a safe place for employees and all who visit the courthouse. Moving to the right side of the organizational chart, we have one probation service officer who monitors individuals placed on a term of probation. Many of these cases are for domestic violence offenses. This program offers the defendant an opportunity to have their violation dismissed upon successful completion. The warrants department consists of two warrant officers who are reserve officers with the Flagstaff Police Department. They handle cases in which a warrant has been issued to bring the defendant before a city magistrate in order to address the issue of non-compliance. This program allows for the defendant to come to court without being arrested on a warrant and booked into custody. Next, we have our collections department, which consists of three collection specialists. They work with the court customers to create reasonable payment plans to collect on court-ordered monetary obligations, track compliance, as well as perform timely follow-up. And lastly, we have our records department, staffed by one court judicial specialist who responds to public records requests, follows records retention and destruction policies, and utilizes the court's electronic document management system in transitioning to a file-free court. So that concludes our team in court operations. I will now pass it over to Kathleen Harrison, Deputy Court Administrator.
Thank you, Heidi. I oversee the court services department, which includes 13.05 FTEs. On the left side of the chart are the court judicial specialist positions, which are broken down into three areas. First is our case management services. This area receives, verifies and uploads citation data into our case management system for citations that have been filed with our court. Second is courtroom services. These court judicial specialists work directly with the judges in the courtroom. They provide support and are responsible for documenting and maintaining the record of the case, then providing information to all parties and agencies involved in each court event. Calendar services is the third area and is comprised of one court judicial specialist. This area is responsible for setting court events and timely processing of motions filed with the court by the city attorney's office, defense counsel and pro-per defendants. The calendar is updated daily and is provided to all court users. Moving over to the right side of the chart, we have our customer service section consisting of three administrative assistants who assist customers in person, online and via telephone. These services include answering a wide variety of questions, payment processing and setting court dates. Additionally, they assist court customers in navigating the protective order process. Next, we have financial services. The court finance specialist monitors all financial matters within the court and provides that information to the city. Finance department. She processes court customer online payments and the pay near me transactions for payments received off-site. Additionally, she works directly with victims, providing information on restitution owed and disperses the collected restitution payments. Next is jury services. The jury service specialist is the point of contact for all individuals summoned for jury duty. She provides information to jurors verbally, in writing and online regarding their summons dates and service. When reporting for jury service, the jurors are given instructions and are provided an orientation by the jury specialists. Lastly, is interpreter service. The interpreter coordinator position is an intergovernmental agreement position. She is the staff Spanish interpreter and interpreter coordinator for all courts within Coconino County. Interpreter services are provided to individuals appearing for all court events in any spoken language and American Sign Language. That concludes our team in court services. I will now pass it over to Judge Cridle.
Thank you, Kathy. The Flagstaff Municipal Court is responsible for the adjudication and disposition of all local code violations, criminal misdemeanor, civil traffic, criminal traffic and contested parking cases that occur within the Flagstaff city limits. Our court has three full-time divisions with court events held five days a week. The initial appearance is the first court event for individuals who are in custody. Depending on whether the defendant is released or held in custody at that initial appearance, an arraignment will be set. For individuals who were not arrested, the arraignment would be their first court date. Next, the cases that require a trial will be assigned a pre-trial conference and trial date. Some of the cases are resolved and the court will conduct a change of plea and sentencing hearing. If the case does not resolve, then it must proceed to either a non-jury or a jury trial. All court dates must be set in compliance with the Arizona Rules of Criminal Procedure. Our court must also be available to handle requests for protective orders as well as preside over protective order hearings. Next up, Judge Speed.
Thank you, Judge Cridle. The Flagstaff Municipal Court has two specialty courts, mental health and veterans court. Unlike our typical court docket, which involves an adversarial contest between prosecution and defense, the objective of these two courts is to address not just the incident that brought the participant into our court, but the root cause is prohibiting these individuals from becoming successful, contributing members of our community. In the case of our mental health court, this involves matching participants with local mental health care providers to assess and manage the individual's therapeutic needs. For veterans, the court facilitates contact with a Veterans Administration representative who, after assessing eligibility, pairs the veteran with the numerous services and resources offered by the VA. Each year, we participate in the High Country Veteran Stand Down. The stand-down provides veterans with services such as haircuts, minor medical treatment and job counseling, puts them in contact with housing opportunities and mental health and substance abuse providers, and also allows them to address any legal matters currently before the court. In addition to our specialty courts, twice a year, one of our judges travels to the, to the Tuba City Judicial District Court to resolve outstanding municipal court cases. This is done in coordination with the Flagstaff Justice Court and District Five Supervisor Lena Fowler. I will now turn the presentation back over to Court Administrator Jessica Cortez.
Thank you, Judge Speed. For the sake of brevity, I would like to highlight just a few of our accomplishments and initiatives. First, and my personal favorite, is completion of the courthouse project. In October of this past year, the construction was finished and we took occupancy of the new courthouse. Some council members have toured the facility, and I wanted to take this opportunity to invite those of you that have not yet had the chance to contact me for a visit. Next, we held our ninth Coconino County Court Staff Training Conference, which was held virtually to safely offer training opportunities to court employees during the COVID-19 pandemic. Lastly, the court, along with our justice system partners, applied for and received grant funding through the Arizona Criminal Justice Commission to address issues brought about by the COVID-19 pandemic. These additional funds have enabled the court to purchase protective partitions and laptops for the courtrooms as well as funds for overtime in order to continue essential functions of the court in a safe manner. Under our initiatives is the Justice 2040 Strategic Planning Event, which will be held on September 23, 2021. The council should have received a save the date notice via email that has some additional information about the event. We do hope that you will be available to take part in the visioning and long-range strategic planning for the courts within Coconino County. The next initiative is to continue to work on technology advances through our Criminal Justice Integration Project with our justice partners. And following that is our electronic document management system. On the latter project, we are working on our last and most complex case type, which are our criminal cases to achieve a file-free court. This is the conclusion of the court overview. We appreciate your time and support and are happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Cortez. Council, do we have any questions at this time? Councilmember Shumoni. Councilmember? There you go.
I'm sorry, engaging my camera. There it goes. I just wanted to say thank you to the court team for the presentation and your work specifically throughout this pandemic. I think you all have done a good job to pivot and address the needs of your staff along with the public through your operations to the best of your ability. And I'm just grateful for your efforts and leadership during this challenging time. Again, congrats on the new space. I know it probably doesn't feel as new anymore, but I'm really, really glad to have the team we have in place. And, and I don't have any questions or comments. I just appreciate your time and presentation today. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, council member. I'll, I'll echo that. Thank you for all of your hard work and I appreciate the informative presentation. And thank you all for participating and see you got the whole crew there in the conference room. So, oh, yeah, thank you. And councilmember Salas has a comment as well.
Hello, Judge Tatinah and our court team. Glad to see your faces online. Sending you a big grateful, thankful heart for everything you do and your continued stellar, stellar service for our community. And please count me in to be a volunteer or any way I could, I could support your effort on May 14th, the High Country Stand Down. So count me in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent. Well, thank you much. And yeah, we can, it looks like we can move right along here to our next agenda item, which is our city attorney's office.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor and Council. Sterling Solomon, your city attorney. I'm going to pull the presentation up on the screen here and let me know when you can see that. All right, I appreciate it, Mayor. I'm honored to present our division introduction for the city attorney's office. As you know, I have a very talented team and I'm very honored to present them to you here tonight. Very grateful to work with each one of them. Just a roadmap forward of the presentation tonight. I'm going to give a brief overview of the division, which will include the organizational chart. Our division and section heads will have the opportunity to introduce themselves in more detail as well as our full-time employees. I know they're not people that you usually get to see, particularly from the prosecution section. So I, I'm grateful to them for being willing to be here with us tonight and to present to you how the city attorney's office runs. As you know, much of what we do is confidential. So it'll be a little shorter presentation than maybe some of the divisions you have seen. I appreciate the court's presentation. They're always a tough act to follow. And I, I hope we can at least give you a little better understanding as well as the public, a little better understanding of our organization and what we do here in the city attorney's office, to the extent we can present that tonight. So first of all, our, our city attorney's office has an approximate $2 million budget. We are 100% human resources staffed. It's a human, we don't have widgets or gadgets or repairs or anything like that that we do. It's all employees. That's the lion's share of our budget. There are 17 employees in the city attorney's office, two of whom are yet to be added, but those are positions that were awarded to us and we appreciate that the council. Those are both going into the prosecution section, and you'll hear a little more about that as we go forward. One of the things that I wanted to do at the outset was just to highlight the fact that our division is in two different sections. Our prosecution section, well, both of them obviously operate under the city charter. As per city charter, the city attorney's office has the obligation to prosecute all misdemeanors within the city of Flagstaff as well as provide legal advice and opinions to the council and handle litigation. The prosecution section is primarily the office that handles all of the criminal misdemeanor cases that occur within the city of Flagstaff. They represent the city and they represent the state of Arizona in prosecuting those cases, and they do so well. We have multiple cases that come through. We have a very good prosecution team and you'll hear more from them as we move forward. The civil section, again, has per city charter. We have the obligation of providing legal advice and opinions to our primary client, you, the city council. But that also includes the city manager's office and all of the city divisions, including the boards and commissions throughout the city. We also handle all litigation. We represent the city, either our office or manage outside council who represents the city. And that, again, under city charter, is an obligation we're happy to fulfill. And we think we've done so in a very strong fashion and plan on continuing to do so. We're, again, we have a very talented team and I appreciate all the effort and the work they put forward. All of that is in addition to the regular day-to-day business, if you will, reviewing all ordinances, contracts, resolutions, any kind of legal document that involves the city. We want to ensure, you know, compliance with federal, state, local law, obviously. And that is our job in the city attorney's office. So moving forward, I want to give you just a little bit of a, an idea under our organization of who we work for. We work for the community of Flagstaff. As you see, I'd like you to focus your attention to the right on this slide. And I appreciate city manager Clifton. When he came into the organization, the city of Flagstaff, he put together this organizational chart. And I think it's great, a great illustrative example of how we are organized here. You, the city council, are elected, obviously, by the citizens of the city of Flagstaff, the Flagstaff community. And as a result, we represent you and you are our primary client. As you can see under that organizational chart, the city attorney is one of only three direct appointments that the city council makes. You just heard from the city magistrate and you often hear from the city manager. And we appreciate working with this team and appreciate working with you. Just a little bit about the different employees that I work with directly. I have a deputy city attorney, a city prosecutor and a legal assistant, all three of whom report directly to me, and they supervise their various employees. Our deputy city attorney, Kevin Finsel, will introduce himself in more detail later, and so will the city prosecutor, Brent Harris. I would like to take the opportunity to introduce Vicky Baker, who is our legal assistant extraordinaire. And she's been at the city attorney's office longer than any of us. She has been an incredible asset to the city and we can't thank her enough for the service that she provides. She reviews, proofreads, assists with coordination of, and has actual budgeting responsibility within the city attorney's office for our entire division. and has actual budgeting responsibility within the city attorney's office for our entire division. And I could not say enough good about Vicki Baker. She's great. As for myself, as the city attorney, just by way of background, I'm an Arizona native, a northern Arizona native. I love living in Arizona. While I attended my undergraduate at Arizona State University, yes, I'm a Sun Devil, and I caught a lot of flak last week for wearing a hat at the Rio de Flag Tour with the general that was an ASU hat. But I'm a Sun Devil. It is what it is. I'm also a ZAG. I attended Gonzaga University for law school and decided after being in Washington State for about three years that I needed more sunlight in my days. So I'm back in Arizona, and I enjoy it a lot. So with that, I am going to turn the time over to our city prosecutor, Brent Harris, and his team to make some introductions of themselves.
Thank you very much, Sterling. And I'm going to ask Carol to introduce her team and introduce her staff and go with that, and then I'll chime in shortly.
Hello and good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Carol Harvey. I'm the lead worker for the city prosecution section. I have been with this office for over, a little over eight and a half years. I supervise the support staff in this office. Fortunately, two of them wouldn't, aren't available. So Stephanie Golding, you'll see your picture on the right there. She is one of four administrative specialists that has worked for our office for a little over five years. She handles all the Division III non-victim cases. She enjoys keeping busy. Of course, we have tons of work and the people she works with. And Colleen Calhoun, I'll have her introduce herself. Colleen, you want to jump on?
Hi, I'm Colleen Calhoun. I've been with the city now for over four years. Division Five Assistant Specialist and for the non-victim cases. And I enjoy working here. Everybody I've come in contact is just really neat people, and I have lived with, in the city of flagstaff, almost my entire adult life. So that's kind of me in a nutshell.
Thank you. And Allison Nagretti, who is down below on the left, a little center-left. Allison is the Victims' Rights Specialist for our office. She has been with the city for a little over two years. She handles all the victims' cases. She notifies the victims of any upcoming court hearings. It's a system through ongoing cases, and pre-COVID, she was able to attend hearings with any victims that needed extra support or assistance. She really enjoys helping victims get through this unfortunate time in their lives and hopefully gives them a peace of mind when they leave our office. The fourth, the fourth position is vacant at the moment and hoping to get it filled soon. And thank you for approving the additional positions in our office. I believe the support staff is the backbone of this work, of the prosecution section. We oversee over 4,000 misdemeanor cases per year. We see them through the system from the beginning to the end. This also includes creating cases, managing cases, and closing out cases. And in between that, we notify officers, witnesses, victims, and let them know that there's an upcoming court hearing date. We make sure that the prosecutors are well-prepared for their hearings, just to make it easier for them to do their jobs. I personally enjoy working for the city of flagstaff, especially the prosecution section, because of their continued support from the city and the department heads. And thank you for allowing, allowing me time to introduce myself and my staff.
And allow me to wholeheartedly bang the drum on behalf of Carol and her team. We literally could not do what we do without them. The volume of work that they produce at such a high, just incredibly accurate level is just amazing. And without which the prosecutors who I'm about to have introduce themselves seriously could not do our job. So thank you so much to Carol and her team. Thank you to Budget and City Council for getting us that badly needed, yet vacant, for not much longer position. And I'm going to go ahead and ask the prosecutors to introduce themselves one by one. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Serena Sarassio. I am the newest addition for one more week at the office. So next week, we have our newest addition of the prosecutors. I've been with the city three years as of July of this year and 13 years as a prosecutor in flagstaff. I spent 10 years at the county attorney's office before joining the city attorney's office. My assignment right now is trial work. So I am in Judge Chotina's courtroom on Tuesdays, eight o'clock to five o'clock, doing bench trials, case management conferences, sentencings, conditions, change of plea hearings, and issuing warrants for anybody that does not appear. I'm in court two to four days a week, depending on what the week looks like. And then in addition to our day-to-day work, we also are handling pre-trial conferences on Fridays, where we meet with the defendants one-on-one and go through explaining to what their plea offer is and what their options are. So we are also prepping 20 to 40 cases a week to prepare for those Friday hearings, which also includes anywhere from one to eight DUIs. So that's what I handle in a nutshell at this office. And I'll turn it over to Robert.
Mayor, members of council, I'm Robert Brown, Assistant Flagstaff City Prosecutor. I have served the city in this capacity for almost 17 years now. I have a total of over 30 years' experience in misdemeanor prosecutions as a trial prosecutor. When I last appeared before council in 2019, it was estimated that I had prosecuted more than 40,000 cases across the state. I first started working with Mojave County Attorney back in 1990, and for a short while, then worked for Cochise County Attorney in, leave from 1992 to 1997, and then worked for Navajo County Attorney in Holbrook for about seven years before I started working here in 2004. I currently handle the Tuesday trials in the Division III courtroom under Judge Speed. My caseload is roughly similar to what Ms. Rassio has mentioned. The new prosecutor who's supposed to come on this coming Monday will likely be assigned to my docket and expect me to rotate to a new duty segment once she comes on board and takes my duties. And now I'll turn the matter over to Ron Canwisher, my fellow prosecutor.
Good afternoon. My name is Ron Canwisher. I have been a litigator for about 33 years. I'm in my 18th year with the city of flagstaff as a prosecutor. My caseload is similar to Robert's and Serena's. I, right now, I'm on the schedule where I appear on Mondays in front of Judge Speed in the morning and Judge Chotina in the afternoon. And I really like prairie dogs, as you can see from my background. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Ron, and the rest of my team. I will state without equivocation that few experiences in life are so pleasurable as showing up to a group presentation only to find out that the team before you has prepared vastly more than you have. But I do very much appreciate my team and their efforts going forward. If we run the numbers together, we'll do about 4,500 cases a year for the handful of people you just met. So I very much appreciate that we're going to get some help starting Monday with a new prosecutor out of Tucson. I'm glad to take her from Tucson, add her to our team, and get her role, and she's very excited to do trial work. I think she's going to be an excellent addition to Team Flagstaff. In addition, getting the new admin specialist is just going to frankly relieve some of the pressure on us. We're getting back to staffing levels from roughly 2008 and the Great Recession there. I think we all know the city population has neither decreased nor become less criminogenic over the past 13 or 14 years. So that help is just going to be absolutely essential and vital to us achieving our mission. Our mission is not, in fact, to prosecute criminals or to get jail days. Our mission is to do justice, and that is why I went from being a criminal defense attorney to prosecutor, and then shortly thereafter, the chief prosecutor. Everybody in this office firmly believes in doing justice. And to that end, we have diversion programs that run the gamut from domestic violence diversion, drug diversion, first offender diversion, shoplifting diversion. Most of councils heard me talk about that, probably ad nauseam. We also run the Veteran Services Court, as well as the Mental Health Court in conjunction with the city court. They're a fantastic partner in trying to find alternatives to fines, incarceration in the system that has predominated criminal justice over the last 30 or 40 years. Very excited about that. And then a no end of thanks to Shannon Anderson, our deputy city manager, Adam Shumoni, other council members, and the mayor who have weighed in on the alternate response task force. We don't want to throw people in jail for doing status offenses, things like that. What we want to do is protect victims and prosecute crimes, reduce assaults, DUI cases, domestic violence cases. So with the help of you, city council, and our city manager's office, you're just really helping us go forward in achieving our goal, which is to do justice. So I want to thank you all personally. I appreciate it. I'll be available for questions today after Sterling wraps up the presentation or at any time. You guys know how to get ahold of me, and I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Brent, and thank you, prosecution section. Appreciate that a lot. I will move now to the next slide. There we go. On our organizational chart, the civil section includes myself, as well as several other attorneys and the legal assistant, Vicki Baker, that I had talked to you about. Deputy City Attorney Kevin Finsel will take the lion's share of this slide here. But one of the things he will mention is that, as I stated at the outset, we represent all of the city divisions. And that includes the boards and commissions. One of the things that each of the attorneys here will tell you is which divisions they primarily represent. For myself, that obviously is you, the city council overall. But that includes the city manager's office, the city clerk's office, the communications, the courts, as well as water services. So in each of their introductions today, you will hear each of these senior assistant city attorneys tell you who they represent as well. With that, I'll turn it over to Kevin.
Thank you, Sterling. And yes, this is Kevin Finsel, Deputy City Attorney. I supervise four attorneys on the civil side, who they will introduce themselves after me. I joined the city in 2014. Currently, I work with human resources, our Public Works Department, risk management, sustainability, and our Community Development Department. Prior to joining the city, I worked at a law firm in Phoenix, representing clients in the areas of employment and commercial litigation. And unlike Sterling, I'm a wildcat. I received my JD from the University of Arizona. With that, I will turn it over next to Anya Wendell, one of our senior assistant city attorneys here in our office.
Well, good afternoon, Mayor and Council, and to all of you who are listening in this afternoon. I am Anya Wendell, Senior Assistant City Attorney. I joined Flagstaff about nine years ago in July 2012. I currently have the pleasure of working with Economic Vitality and the Real Estate Divisions, Finance, and Information Technology. So I feel like I have a good set. But I also worked long time with personnel, and that was also an interesting learning experience for me. Before I came to Flagstaff, I worked for 17 years in private practice for a small law firm in Phoenix. We represented Gilbert, the town of Gilbert, Litchfield Park, and several other municipalities. So I've been practicing municipal law a long time. Really long. You guys do the math. And I grew up in Tucson. I'm currently here right now. I had a meeting this morning with Representative Kenny Construction, which was kind of neat because he just lives down the street from my mom. At any rate, I'm happy to work for Flagstaff, and I'm happy we have such great city management and council. Thanks.
Thank you, Anya. So next is Mary Ann Sullivan. Unfortunately, Mary Ann is unable to join us this evening. She is actually attending some depositions in a pending case. Mary Ann is also a senior assistant city attorney in our office. She joined the civil section full-time in 2015. She works with our police and fire departments and is the office lead on Section 1983 litigation. Prior to her position here in the civil section, she was a prosecutor for the city and a felony prosecutor for the county. Although Mary Ann is not here in person, we included a photo of her on the slide. You see she's playing bagpipes. Mary Ann is actually a member of the Flagstaff Police Department Honor Guard as their bagpiper, and she plays at promotion ceremonies and officer funerals. So now I'll turn it over to Christina Rubocaba. Let her introduce herself.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Christina Rubocaba. I've been with the city since March of 2016. So last month was my five-year anniversary. I am the primary attorney with our Community Development Division, including housing, and then our Capital Improvements and Engineering. And so you'll see me most often when we have development agreements or rezonings or if we get claims related to development most often. Before coming to this city, I was a partner at the Phoenix Law Firm of Osborne Melagon. I, my primary practice areas were employment, education, and then general commercial litigation. And I am a Sun Devil undergrad, got my bachelor's from ASU and my JD from Stanford.
Thank you, Christina. So our, last but not least, we have Christina Perry. Christina, are you available?
Yes, I am. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am a senior assistant city attorney. I joined the city in June of 2016. My primary clients are human resources, procurement, working on solicitations and contracts, the city clerk, where I assist the clerk with public records requests, and the Public Works Department. I previously worked in private practice in the city of Phoenix and also for a law firm here in Flagstaff. I, in addition, I worked for the Arizona Attorney General's Office in Phoenix and for a number of years with the city of Glendale. My education is an undergraduate degree with, from Arizona State University. I have a master's in public administration, also from Arizona State University, and then my law degree. So unlike Kevin, I bleed maroon and gold. And that's it.
Thank you, Christina. So yeah, as you can see, council, Mayor Council, we have a very experienced civil section. We have a wonderful group. I really enjoy working with them and working with Sterling on the civil side. We're here if you have any questions. Otherwise, I'll turn it back over to Sterling.
Mayor Council, I would reiterate what Kevin just said. On both sides, the civil and the prosecution side, we have an incredibly talented team that provides legal services to the city and does so in a very adept and very professional fashion. I'm privileged to work with this team, and I'm grateful for the honor to work with you as well. And if you have any questions, we're open.
Thank you, city attorney. Council, if you have any comments, questions, throw them in the chat box. I will start off by saying that on two fronts, with the prosecutor's office, every time I hear the numbers of what you all are able to process in a given day and year is crazy. We had a council member, Aslan, said there's 12 cases every single day of the year. But that comes down to 15 cases per business day. So that's, that's really impressive. And to our civil division, thank you for all the work you do. It is, it's crazy how much you all have to work behind the scenes and answer our crazy questions from council and city attorney taking my calls at 10 o'clock when I get a harebrained idea to say if I'm on anywhere the right track. But anyways, I just, I just appreciate all the work that you all put in, and I continue to be amazed. So thank you. Councilmember Solis.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Solomon and the prosecution and civil section teams, I send you big, warm, grateful hearts for everything you do. You know, at the prosecution, prosecution level, just, I'm just in awe of all the cases that you've been handling and also handling, you know, mental, mental courts and veterans' courts. And also introducing, you know, the Alternative Response Task Force. And for our civil section, thank you all for keeping us out of trouble. Legally speaking.
Thank you, Councilmember Solis.
There you go. Councilmember Shumoni.
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, Sterling.
Hi, Sterling. Um, hello. I have a question that might take us to East. I'm just kidding, I don't. Um, thank you for the presentation. Thank you to your team. Thank you to the, to the entire team. I'm glad to hear about the new additions to our Prosecutor's, um, Operations. I, I did have a question for Mr. Brent Harris, assuming he's still with us. Um, I, and, and while he's getting with us.
Sure, I'm on call.
Um, Brent, I wanted to thank you for your engagement and involvement with the Alternate Response Group that we've been having, uh, internally at the city and, and, and your expertise and leadership and passion for the well-being of our community and to best serve our community. It's, it's been inspiring to work with you, and I know we have a lot of work to do, but I just wanted to give you kudos publicly for your efforts and your, your drive to do what's right for the community at large. Um, Brent, I just wanted to put you on the spot and just get a quick update from you on, um, just Prop 207, claims, I know you all were, were going through those pretty quick. I just wanted to give you an opportunity to get another update, and then I have another question for that.
Uh, so not only was I able to dismiss, I believe, every pending marijuana case and drug paraphernalia case that met the statute, uh, as of about a month ago, but, uh, with the work of the Court and the Warrant Officer, we're actually on a regular basis cleaning up all of the old warrant cases, uh, figuring out any case that has a marijuana or drug paraphernalia warrant that fits the statute and, uh, making it so that person is not wrongfully picked up on a warrant for a case we can no longer prosecute. Uh, I would estimate I dismissed several hundred active pending marijuana cases as of several months ago. At this point, frankly, probably two months ago, I got that done. And I think it's been another couple hundred cases that have been on warrant status for, you know, twelve months to twenty years, uh, trying to resolve these things. And so that just, I think, decreases the burden on our Court, our Court Staff, our Warrant Officers, our Police Officers. And, you know, we don't look to run our office by counting jail days or whatever kind of incarceration we can get for people. So I think that, uh, having tried to do our best to make sure that no person wrongfully spends a day in jail for a warrant on a case that we're not going to win anyways, that's justice. You know, that's the justice seeking that I talk about my office trying to do. Uh, so we've tried to be as proactive as we can on that, and I'm just so thankful to get this other person in. We can reshuffle some duties in our office. You know, Robert Brown has tried probably forty-two thousand misdemeanor cases at this point. Maybe it's time to let him do some of the back office work that I've been doing, which will free up some of the time to let me do some of the work that Counsel has indicated they want me to do, like work on the alternate response models, like try to work on the, uh, you know, the iron triangle of substance abuse and homelessness and mental illness, um, things that shouldn't land people in jail, you know? And so I'm, I'm just incredibly thankful for this opportunity, for what Counsel and Budget have worked on, uh, frankly, to the voters for passing 207 because that lets me actually work on people that are leaving others bleeding or bereft of their property or whatever. Let me, let me go after the bad guys, and, uh, I like doing that. So I don't have anything else right now. Thank you.
Thank you. And that's, that's my only question. Um, Sterling, thank you, um, for your leadership and your approach here at the city. We, we are very grateful to have you as part of our team and our legal team. I think the public doesn't realize how much conversations we have, um, without the public at the table, just because it's legal matters. And I just want to say publicly that we are very lucky to have you working for the city and working to represent the, the community of Flagstaff and the city of Flagstaff and our population. And, um, you do a great job at empowering those around you and lifting up your, your teammates. And, and you really are a leader and a facilitator and a team player. So, um, thank you. On behalf of, of the city, I just want to say thank you to you, um, uh, from the DIAS. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I'm nothing if not for my team. I, I admit that. Thank you.
Thank you, City Attorney, and thank you, Councilmember Shmone, um, and Mr. Harris. It's, it's doing so, so many great things right now. Um, I love seeing it all, uh, roll out here. So, um, without further ado, I think this brings us to our next agenda item. Um, unless there's any further questions, uh, from Counsel that I'm not seeing in the chat box right now. All right. Well, then that takes us to Agenda Item Number Eleven, which is our federal and, or state and federal legislative updates.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. Just getting the slideshow set up here. All right, is that displaying correctly?
Yes.
Yep.
All right. So, um, good evening. My name is Sarah Langley, Management Analyst in the City Manager's Office. Uh, tonight, we have a legislative update that will cover two different items. So the first item we would like to discuss is a tax cut proposal that we expect to be introduced in the State House of Representatives. Um, as you may be aware, the state is currently experiencing a large budget surplus, and various representatives, as well as the governor, have expressed interest in lowering the state income tax rate. The current proposal is for, um, a 2.5% flat-rate state income tax, which would be phased in over three years, or that's the number that we're hearing right now, um, three or four years. So this would result in a $1.5 billion decrease in state revenues. And then as cities and towns receive 15% of those revenues collectively, that means that this cut would directly impact, um, the amount of shared income tax revenue that Flagstaff receives annually from the state. So if this flat income tax rate were to be implemented, the city could expect to see a loss of approximately $1 million in shared income tax revenue in fiscal year F, uh, sorry, fiscal year '24, a loss of approximately $2 million in fiscal year '25, and an approximate $3 million loss in FY '26. And then that $3 million loss would be, uh, repeated annually every year after FY '26. So this would obviously have a very significant impact on our general fund, and those dollars are used to pay for essential services such as public safety and infrastructure. So in response to this plan, um, or this tax proposal, we are planning to schedule meetings between our Councilmembers and Representative Blackman, Representative Barton, and Senator Rogers to communicate these concerns from an elected official to another elected official. Um, due to time sensitivity, we're scheduling these meetings based on availability and just trying to get them scheduled, um, as quickly as possible. And then we'll also be providing talking points to Councilmembers prior to the meetings. So that is just a quick overview of the proposed tax cut and our advocacy plan in response to it. So I will pause there and see if there are any questions, and then after that, I have one more item I'd like to cover.
City Council, do we have any questions about the, uh, income tax cut?
All right.
I'm not seeing anything. Yeah. Oh, Councilmember Shmone.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry about that. Sarah, thank you for that update. Um, quick question. Uh, has Representative Blackman, um, or Barton, or, or, um, anyone that is, is affiliated with the city of Flagstaff, has any of them, have any of them spoken out publicly against this that we know of?
Thank you, Councilmember Shmone. Um, I am not, I know that this bill is, yeah, Todd is also on the line. Um, Todd says no. Todd, feel free to come up, come off mute if, if you'd like to chime in.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, yeah, we have, they have not, nobody has, um, the, the opposition to the proposal has basically been along partisan, uh, lines. No, no Republicans have spoken out against it yet. Um, part of that reason is because there really isn't anything in writing that we can look at. So we sort of are, um, we're tilting against arguments that are being made without actually seeing a bill. And I think part of the reason is they want to see, the, the Republican Caucus would like to see where that measure has support, where it has opposition, and how they can tweak it.
Okay, thank you. Um, and okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Uh, I'm not seeing anything else in the chat box if we'd like to press forward.
All right. So pivoting to a second topic here, um, we have House Bill 2668, and we received a request, um, over the weekend to include a quick, um, update on this bill. So House Bill 2668, um, had a Strike Everything Amendment that was introduced several weeks ago, and that amendment refocused the bill on the topic of homelessness. So the bill has many provisions, but it mainly works to prohibit camping on state property except for, um, what the bill calls structured camping facilities, which are basically defined in the bill as, um, parking lots with utility hookups. And that would be, those would be established by the state. Uh, the bill then requires cities to establish homeless outreach teams, as they're called in the bill, to enforce this and move people experiencing homelessness to either shelters or these structured camping facilities. Um, cities and towns that experience growth in their homeless populations for two consecutive years after that outreach team is established, um, would become ineligible for certain public safety grants, like the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant, which is something that, that we do regularly receive. Um, so this bill was introduced very late in the session, as you can tell, um, by an out-of-state think tank. Um, there was notably no stakeholder process that took place and really no analysis of best practices that are used by municipalities. So over, which would be successful in, um, providing pathways to long-term housing for people. Um, and of course, matters need to be involved to create viable solutions. So this bill is being opposed by a coalition of cities and towns across the state, as well as, uh, by a variety of the prophets. So the city of Flagstaff is currently signed in in opposition to this bill. Uh, those are the actual questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Langley. Uh, Councilmember Aslan.
Yeah, Sarah, thank you. Uh, so what was the outside think take that came up with this? Could you name it, please?
I believe it's called the Cicero Institute. Is that correct, Todd?
Yes, that's correct.
Could you say that again or, or put it in the chat?
It's the Cicero Institute in Texas.
With a C.
Thank you.
And, uh, so this is all slated for the floor, right? We're out, out of committees and everything else because this was a strike, any, a strike everything, right? Am I correct in that? Yes, Mayor, i- i- you're correct. Okay. So this has only got one, you know, vote for. Do we know, have, have our? Procedurally, this has to go to the floor. Then this has to go back to the original house of origin, where presumably the sponsor of the bill will, will approve the amendments if it comes back over, and then there would be a final vote. So there will be about three more votes on the measure. Okay. Has any of our, um, state representatives put, uh, any notification or stated anything regarding this bill? Uh, Mr. Mayor, Sarah, Mr. Mayor, do you mind, Sarah, do you mind if I go ahead and answer?
No, go ahead, Todd.
Um, Mr. Mayor, they have not yet. We have started doing outreach to them to try and schedule meetings for elected official to elected official conversations. You know, so we, we haven't, well, that was on the tax bill. We haven't heard anything about this. This is a very heavy lift, and it's a drastic change in policy statewide. So it's unclear to me at this point whether the executive supports it and what's, what's going on with it. I'm trying to find out as we, as, this week as we're here. Great, thank you. And, uh, thanks for throwing this update on here at the, uh, just, uh, yesterday because, yeah, we had heard over the weekend about it, um, a little more thoroughly, and this definitely is very concerning to me and, um, likely a good number of us here on Counsel, and, uh, especially goes against the route that we are trying to take with alternate response and our other city initiatives and so forth that are going the other direction, not this direction. So, um, I appreciate your attentiveness to this and the update today. Uh, Councilmember Shmone.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, and hi, Todd, welcome. Thanks for being with us. Question, so, so this prohibits camping on state property, eh, other than, uh, structured camping facilities, and then requires the cities to establish homelessness outreach. Uh, is there funding that will be coming to the cities for this outreach? Did I miss that?
I don't believe there's funding associated with the measure at this point.
So it's a required, um, service that, eh, okay. I'm gonna hold my tongue and, and just, uh, let that be for now, and then.
I think the word you're looking for, Mr. Shmone, is unfunded mandate.
Yep, thank you. Yep. Um, and then that third bullet point that talks about the, the safety grants, can you just further explain that to me? I'm a little confused, uh, what, uh, what this really means.
Yeah, Councilmember Shmone. So, um, according to, to my reading of the bill, um, I'm not sure if cities would do this or who would be enforcing this, maybe the Department of Administration, but, um, I believe the point in time count would be used as a data source, and then if the number of, um, individuals experiencing homelessness was deemed to have gone up, um, over us, over two years after the establishment of the homeless outreach teams, as they're called, um, then we would, we could be deemed ineligible for public safety grants, and one that's specifically called out in the bill is the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, um, which we do receive regularly. So I believe the intent is to, to try and show that the outreach teams are effective, and if they're not, then you would, the city would be penalized.
And the outreach team being effective, uh, finding folks who are homeless and, and kind of moving them along, I mean, I, I understand.
Yeah, I believe the, the point of the outreach teams is moving people from, um, wherever they may be to a shelter or to one of these, um, structured camping facilities.
Okay. Um, I have a lot of concerns about this. I think this is, uh, I would say ridiculous. Um, I'm very frustrated, and I, I, I just, I, I'm grateful that the slide is up here and that we're having this conversation. I'm not too sure what we can do as a city to oppose this if Council Majority were to agree to that opposition. I know staff is actively opposing this bill, but, um, yeah, this is, this is very concerning and extremely problematic in my eyes. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Shmone. And I'll, uh, Councilmember McCarthy is saying draconian in the chat box, and I agree. Uh, so please toggle, or Mr. Medeska and Ms. Langley, please let us know where, uh, says Counsel can help for contacting directly our representatives, uh, wha- whatever we can do for this that you would see as a productive use of our time to the end goal of not seeing this come into law. Um, yeah, as I know you well, please just keep us updated and where we can help, I want to help, so.
One more comment, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Uh, I, Sarah was struggling to find a word to describe the camps. I, I might use the word concentration camp. Um, this really does seem like a bad idea to me. I'd like to do a little bit more research on it. Uh, I'm someone who has in the past supported our, uh, status quo on the anti-camping ordinance, and if we were to ever revisit that, I think there's a lot of room for some nuance there. Um, I am supportive of our current anti-camping ordinance in terms of, uh, public safety concerns, but I, I would say that this is a, a bridge too far. This goes far beyond anything I would ever imagine, uh, us, um, executing here in the, in the city, and, uh, draconian is a great, great label for it. So I'll, uh, I just wanted to put my two cents in there for that.
Thank you, Councilmember Aslan. Um, I'm not seeing any further, uh, sees and, or cues in the, uh, chat box, so, um, we can, uh, press forward here. Um, yeah, uh, that will bring us down to our Agenda Item Number Twelve. And that is our presentation and discussion regarding the Community Development Block Grant Programs 2021 to 2025 Five-Year Consolidated Plan, the City of Flagstaff's Analysis of Impediments to Fair Housing Choice, and the 2021-2022 Annual Action Plan and Staff Recommendations for CDBG, um, PY 2021 Fund allocations. Uh, Ms. Pavlick, wait.
Hello. Can everybody see my presentation okay on the screen?
Uh, yes, ma'am.
Awesome. Good afternoon, Mayor DC, Council and City Staff. I'm Christine Pavlick, the Housing and Grants Administrator for the City of Flagstaff Housing Section. Really excited to be here this afternoon to talk to you all about the city's Community Development Block Grant Program. So this afternoon, we're going to be discussing not only the staff funding recommendations for the city's annual CDBG entitlement, but also the community needs identified through the development of the city's analysis of impediments to fair housing and the consolidated plan. So first, we're going to have a quick refresher. So first, we're going to have a quick refresher course on the CDBG program in general. We'll then discuss the analysis and after that, the consolidated plan, along with the recommended priority needs and objectives for the next five years. Lastly, we'll discuss the proposals received from our community partners for the 2021 CDBG entitlement funds. So this afternoon, I'll be asking for your input regarding these three documents required by HUD, the 2021 Analysis of Impediments to Fair Housing, the 2021 to 2025 Consolidated Plan, and the 2021 Program Year Annual Action Plan. I'll be returning next week with these three resolutions, asking for your approval to submit these documents to HUD. So I'm really looking for your feedback and guidance today. So the Community Development Block Grant Program provides funding for housing and community development activities. It's funded through the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, also known as HUD. Flagstaff is considered an entitlement community, which means that we receive an annual allocation of funding. And that allocation is based on a formula. It takes into consideration things like our population and the age of our housing stock, other community information as well. The most important thing to note is that we have no control or influence over the allocation provided to us from HUD. The national objective of the CDBG program is the development of viable urban communities through the provision of decent housing, a suitable living environment, and economic opportunity, all of which must primarily serve low and moderate income persons. So you, city council, can allocate CDBG funds as you see fit, based on that national and the primary objectives, as well as your established priorities and the needs identified in the five-year consolidated plan. So along with serving low and moderate income persons, to be eligible for CDBG funding, an activity must qualify as one of the following. Limited clientele activities benefit low to moderate income persons or those who are presumed to be low to moderate incomes, such as survivors of domestic violence or individuals who are experiencing homelessness. An example of a limited clientele activity would be operational assistance for a homeless shelter. Housing activities provide and improve permanent residential structures, which will be occupied by low to moderate income persons. Some examples of past projects funded under this activity would be down payment and closing cost assistance, as well as the owner occupied housing rehabilitation program the city has administered for many years. Area benefit activities must benefit all of the residents in a low-income neighborhood. And we established, we established those low-income target neighborhoods in our consolidated plan. So the city of Flagstaff has four target neighborhoods. They are Sunnyside, Southside, La Plaza Vieja, and Pine Knoll. And an example of area benefit projects would include improvements at a community recreation center or street and sidewalk, sidewalk infrastructure updates in target neighborhoods. Job creation and retention activities are designed to create and retain permanent jobs for low and moderate income persons. And in the past, we've funded activities under this national objective, such as job training and creation at Sharon's Attic Thrift Store. Lastly, there is the criteria that the city of Flagstaff must follow when administering CDBG funds, that at least 70% of CDBG must benefit low to moderate income persons. But historically, the city is very proud to say we've served 100% of low to moderate income persons with City of Flagstaff CDBG funding. So in order to continue to receive our annual allocation, the city must submit a series of documents to HUD at various times. The first is the Annual Action Plan. This tells HUD what the city is going to do with its annual entitlement. It's going to tell them how the activities that we will be funding meet the goals of our consolidated plan. Next is our CAPER, which stands for Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report. This is due every September and it reports to HUD what we did with the funding and the accomplishments of those funded projects. And then every five years, we complete and submit the consolidated plan, which is a five-year assessment of housing and community development needs. This document was last submitted to HUD in 2016, and it has defined Flagstaff's goals for the last five years. And our next five-year plan is due May 15th this year. Along with that, HUD requires a fair housing plan. It's called the Analysis of Impediments to Fair Housing Choice, and it's Flagstaff's commitment to affirmatively furthering fair housing. Occasionally, we will also submit amendments to our annual action plans when needed. We had to do this last year to incorporate funds from the CARES Act for coronavirus prevention and response. So as you're aware, CDBG requires extensive public participation. And to date, the city has held four public meetings for this year's annual action plan process. We held an open proposal process from late December to mid-February, and we provided one-on-one technical assistance to interested agencies. The drafts of all three documents that we're discussing tonight were published on our website and available for public comment from March 1st. And actually, there's two more days that we are accepting public comment on those documents. Additionally, the Housing Section assembled a proposal ranking committee with Flagstaff citizens and city staff, and we ranked and scored all of the applications submitted. And this year, we actually started the annual action plan process early. We met with you in mid-December to establish your CDBG priorities. And then we held a public meeting and released a notice of funding availability to the community on December 28th. And we usually don't hold that public meeting until the middle or end of January. But this year, given the pandemic and the additional strain on our local nonprofit and service provider partners that they're facing, we really wanted to allow for ample time for writing and submitting proposals. And this also allowed for additional technical assistance and meetings with staff to help answer any of their questions throughout the process. So as an entitlement community receiving CDBG funding, HUD requires us to make a commitment to affirmatively further fair housing. And so this analysis affirms that commitment by identifying barriers to fair housing within the city. And it develops a plan of action to address those barriers. It's submitted every five years as a part of that con-plan process. So the Fair Housing Attack, the Fair Housing Act protects people from discrimination when they are renting or buying a home, getting a mortgage, seeking housing assistance, or engaging in any other housing-related activities. And there are seven protected classes covered by the Fair Housing Act. This prohibits discrimination in housing because of race, color, national origin, religion, sex, familial status, and disability. The analysis includes, also includes extensive public outreach and community feedback. That's combined with an analysis of data from the Census and the American Census survey estimates, as well, as well as reviews of local policy and national studies, all to identify fair housing impediments specific to our community. So we make an attempt to collect the most recent data possible, and a large majority is provided by the 2015 to 2019 ACS, American Community Survey. But some data that's provided by HUD is from their Community Housing Affordability Strategy from 2011 to 2015. And in a few cases, we did need to use 2010 Census data as 2020 Census data is not yet available, but will be for our next five-year plan. So our public outreach was collected primarily through community surveying. These surveys were mailed to public housing residents and promoted on our website and social media channels, as well as through the Continuum of Care and our local social service provider partners. So both for their staff and their clients. The first survey collected information from community members on what fair housing discriminations they believe exist in Flagstaff or that they may have faced themselves. And the second survey was for housing stakeholders and community housing sector professionals, such as real estate agents and property managers. We really wanted to gain an understanding of fair housing law knowledge held by these professionals. So fair housing choice is defined as the ability of persons, regardless of race, color, religion, sex, disability, familial status, or national origin, of similar income levels, to have available to them the same housing choices. Persons who are protected from discrimination by fair housing laws are referred to as members of the protected classes. And this analysis analyzes a range of fair housing issues regardless of a person's income. But to the extent that members of protected classes tend to have lower incomes, access to fair housing is related to affordable housing. So in many areas across the US, a primary impediment to fair housing is a relative absence of affordable housing. And often, public policies implemented by states, counties, and sometimes cities create or contribute to the lack of affordable housing available in these communities, thereby disproportionately affecting housing choice for members of these protected classes. The city's survey and data analysis did identify a lack of affordable housing as one of the top impediments to fair housing choice in Flagstaff. Additionally, a lack of housing accessible to disabled individuals and a concentration of minority and low-income households in a few specific census tracts were identified as well. A general lack of fair housing laws and the violation reporting process continues to be an impediment in the city. And lastly, the lack of landlords willing to accept a housing choice voucher, also known as a Section 8 voucher, was identified as a barrier to fair housing choice. This might be due to a lack of knowledge on the part of the landlord, a stigmatization of public housing and low-income household residents, but it's most often due to rental rates in Flagstaff being set at an amount far above the fair market amount allowable for use of these vouchers. So the city's goals in developing this analysis and implementing the plan of action include increasing affordable and accessible housing opportunities to provide for greater housing choice among low and moderate income and/or disabled citizens. Also creating public awareness of fair housing laws and reporting processes, and de-stigmatizing housing choice voucher holders among housing sector stakeholders, as well as populations at risk for discrimination in the community as a whole. And lastly, advocating for local and regional policy changes that increase affordable housing and accessible housing development and availability, with a focus on promoting development outside of those minority and low-income areas of concentration. So the plan of action indicates steps that can be taken to address the impediments identified and meet the city's fair housing goals. In order to create public awareness of fair housing laws and reporting processes, the city will continue to offer education and outreach that includes an annual proclamation of April as Fair Housing Month. So thank you, Mayor DC, for your proclamation this evening. We'll also be sponsoring a fair housing event for Fair Housing Month and providing ongoing trainings throughout the year on relevant topics. We will also provide training that allows for continuing education credits that are needed by real estate professionals. These trainings will not just target housing sector professionals, but also community residents that are at risk of discrimination to ensure that they know and understand their rights, as well as the process for reporting possible discrimination. In addition, in addition to general fair housing education, the action plan includes education specific to landlords and property managers regarding housing choice Section 8 vouchers, with efforts to de-stigmatize households utilizing vouchers, as well as community education on affordable housing development in general. To provide more affordable and accessible housing, the plan recommends that funding should be prioritized for rent or occupied housing rehabilitation and incentives to landlords to provide disabled, low-income accessibility adaptations to units affordable to low-income populations. And additionally, the action plan includes items that advocate for local and regional policy changes that increase affordable housing development and availability, with a focus on, again, promoting development outside of those minority and low-income areas of concentration. And lastly, the action plan includes the development of a comprehensive housing plan for the City of Flagstaff, including fair housing, housing choice, and plans to increase the development of affordable and accessible housing throughout the community, which is something that council and housing staff are working on right now. It also encourages the consideration of a media or outreach campaign to combat NIMBY, Not in My Backyard, attitudes, and de-stigmatize the low and moderate income households that benefit from affordable housing and public housing development. We'll be accepting public comment on the analysis of impediments to fair housing until this Thursday. We'll then incorporate these comments into the plan and return to you April 20th requesting approval of a resolution that will allow us to submit the plan to HUD. Next, we're going to be talking about our consolidated plan. So as I mentioned before, the city is required to submit a consolidated plan every five years. The consolidated planning process, it really prompts the city to reassess the needs of some of its most vulnerable residents every five years as those needs change and develop. It also provides opportunities for the community to have input on CDBG spending priorities. And it serves as a strategic, strategic plan to address community needs using CDBG resources over the five-year timeframe. It also acts as a guiding document for allocations made under the next five annual action plans. The consolidated planning process began in August 2020 with a survey targeted to social service and housing providers to gather information about local community need for both housing and non-housing development. In September, we kicked off the public meeting process with a presentation to the Continuum of Care, including over 25 local nonprofit, nonprofit and social service agencies. And in December, we held four public virtual focus groups to identify goals and objectives for meeting proposed priority needs. The December Housing Commission meeting as well served as a focus group, with commission members providing feedback about local housing needs and objectives. So there are many components of the consolidated plan. There's a needs assessment and market analysis, which both provide information about community-specific need gathered through several methods, including consultation with local agencies, public outreach, a review of demographic and economic data sets, and a housing market analysis. The strategic plan portion details how the city will address the priority needs identified during the needs assessment and market analysis process. And the strategies must reflect the current condition of the market, the expected availability of funds, and local capacity to administer the plan. So in addition to establishing goals related to the use of CDBG funds, the plan also includes strategies to improve the delivery system, address lead-based paint hazards, reduce the incidence of poverty, and address barriers to affordable housing development. So consultations took place with the Coconino County Continuum of Care. That's a group of organizations that provide services to homeless individuals and families, families, as well as the city's housing commission. The city conducted those four open-to-the-public virtual focus, focus groups, discussing each of the identified priority needs and proposed activity goals with both residents and stakeholders. And then that public and stakeholder input was used with records of past funding, the needs assessment, the market analysis. They were all used to determine the relative priority of activities and the populations that will ultimately be served. The city must also designate local target areas for revitalization and area benefit projects. So the selected area must be primarily residential, and the area must contain a high percentage of LMI households. So an area of low-income concentration is defined as an area where at least 51% of the population has income below 80% of the area median income. And when establishing target areas, the city also considers areas of minority concentration, which are defined as an area where the proportion of minorities or non-white individuals is at least 10% higher than the proportion of that minority group throughout the city. For this consolidated plan, the city will continue to designate La Plaza Vieja, Sunnyside, Southside, and Pine Knoll as target areas. And while locally, we consider, you know, we consider Pine Knoll as part of the Southside community, the federal definition from HUD identifies Pine Knoll and Southside as two separate neighborhoods. So as mentioned, through the public outreach and data analysis process, four priority needs were established and goals for meeting these needs were identified within each priority category. So the first priority need in our community is neighborhood revitalization, public facilities and infrastructure. And this need can be met with neighborhood facility and infrastructure improvements, including parks, playgrounds, streets, or even broadband infrastructure in target areas. Public facility improvements include rehabilitation of recreation or community centers in target areas. And lastly, it can be met through the acquisition of land for the eventual development of affordable housing. The next priority need is for public services and economic opportunities for low and moderate income individuals and households, including things like childcare services, services for disabled individuals, job training, or small business counseling. This need can also be met with housing stabilization services, including rental assistance and legal services. The next priority need identified is the support of services and projects that address homelessness. This includes program and facility operating support, including outreach and projects that add additional shelter and housing for homeless individuals and families. And lastly, the need for decent affordable housing for ownership and rental was identified as a high priority. This need can be met through housing rehabilitation, affordable housing development, and attainment assistance like down payment or deposit assistance. And this is, again, for ownership and rental units. So HUD allows two priority designations. High is used for projects that are likely to be funded, and low is used for projects that will be funded as opportunities arise. The priority levels high and low don't reflect the lack of need for an activity. It just simply identifies activities likely to be addressed with our limited CDBG funding. So these priority levels refer to CDBG-funded activities only, not the goal for the community overall. To determine the five-year goals of individuals and households served for each activity, past funding and activity outcomes were assessed in addition to that stakeholder and public input. So we'll be accepting public comment on our consolidated plan until Thursday as well. And then we'll incorporate any comments into the plan and return to you April 20th requesting approval of a resolution that will allow us to submit that plan to HUD, along with the AI and our annual action plan, which we're going to discuss next. So if you'll remember, the first time you met me back in December, council established CDBG priorities and supported the continuation of a competitive proposal process with the inclusion of a scored question regarding the applicant's commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion. This year, we received eight proposals. One was withdrawn by the applicant shortly after submission, leaving us with seven proposals for ranking. City staff, along with the ranking committee, which is comprised of citizens and city staff members, assessed each activity's viability and conducted a risk assessment of each proposal and agency. So in all, the seven proposals included So in all, the seven proposals included included requests for funding totally nearly nine hundred thousand dollars. Every two years with new council, the housing section establishes council CDBG goals. And in December of twenty twenty, your CDBG council goals were to provide housing through both rental and ownership. To address homelessness, to support neighborhood revitalization and workforce development. And it is staff and the ranking committee's responsibility to thoroughly review each proposal received to ensure that the activity is both eligible and viable. We also conduct, we also conduct an agency risk assessment. And then we provide recommendations recommendations to you based on the ranking committee's results for you council to make the final funding decisions. Risk is an important consideration for all CDBG funds as regardless of what agency administers the project and receives the funds. It's the city of Flagstaff. That's the ultimate responsible entity to HUD. And because of this, the housing section and the ranking committee take multiple items into consideration when we review proposals. So for example, we review the agency's past performance and success measures and their organizational experience overall. We review the agency's financial capacity and potential for timeliness of expenditure of funds. And we ensure that their grant request is realistic. In addition to the risk assessment and to your priorities, the ranking committee evaluates each proposal in their separate categories and scores them based on matters such as. Number of people served, the agency's leverage abilities, collaboration efforts with other community organizations. And community need based off the data from the consolidated plan. So now we ask ourselves, how much funding are we talking about? And the short answer is always not nearly enough. The housing section received from HUD last month are twenty twenty-one entitlement of five hundred and seventy-one thousand three hundred and sixty-seven dollars. And this is a decrease of around forty thousand dollars from last year's entitlement. Program income is generated by the city's revolving loans. And is comprised of returned interest-free loans from our owner-occupied rehabilitation program and from recaptured funding from our first-time homebuyers assistance program. So this year's program income and reallocated funds total three hundred and twelve thousand four hundred and six dollars and seventeen cents. And this means that for the twenty twenty-one program year, we have. Eight hundred and eighty-three thousand seven hundred and seventy-three hundred and seventeen cents in CDBG funds available to be allocated into our community. So CDBG has two funding caps. One of these HUD funding caps is a twenty percent cap on funds used for administration. So as you can see reflected in the in the slide. The estimated indirect rate for the city is ten percent. I'm sure you're looking at this slide trying to do the math and saying it doesn't add up. But basically, the number comes from finance and the calculation for this indirect number. Takes ten percent of our current year allocation while also estimating the upcoming year's program income. Then that leaves the city with close to seventy thousand dollars to administer CDBG contracts and to abide. All of the federal regulation compliance. These are items such as environmental reviews, Davis Bacon and Fair Housing requirements and subrecipient reporting and compliance and monitoring. So staff is recommending the allocation of slightly less than the HUD allowable amount. As it's safer to budget slightly below the required cap, just to make sure we meet that percentage cap. Next, let's address the public service cap. So public service funding can use up to fifteen percent of the total available CDBG funding. Public services. It's funding that provides operational assistance and programs support to agencies for projects that serve low and moderate income households and individuals. So this year, we have a little over a hundred and twelve thousand dollars available to fund proposals in this category. And lastly, the city of Flagstaff estimated. A remaining amount of six hundred and forty-nine thousand four hundred and thirty-five and sixty-seven cents to go toward eligible activities in the housing category. So now we will take a look at what proposals were received by the city. On this slide, you can see the proposals received in the public service category. The organization, the project and their funding request, as well as the proposed individuals or households to be served. And the application score from the ranking committee. So I'll tell you a little bit about each of these projects. Homeless Youth Connection proposes to provide youth experiencing homelessness in grades nine through twelve. With basic needs and resources to ensure they stay in school and complete their education. HYC will provide services to at least seventy youth experiencing homelessness in the city of Flagstaff. CDBG funds will be used to employ a full-time youth coach. And that youth coach will work together with youth to identify needs related to academics, health, housing, hygiene, employment and independent living skills. The Native Americans for Community Action Small Business Assistance Project proposes to provide business coaching and mentorship to low and moderate income individuals. That are interested in developing skills in retail sales or to start operate their own small or micro business. CDBG funds will be used to employ a full-time equivalent project coordinator and operational support for the program. The programs would provide twelve individuals with retail sales skills and or assistance to start expand their small business. Or micro business over the course of one year. The Boys and Girls Club of Flagstaff. Proposes to offer a wide range of activities for the youth of Flagstaff during their after-school, school break and summer programs. These programs provide children and teens with a safe place to learn and grow, life-enhancing programs and character development experiences. Ongoing relationships with caring adult professionals and hope and opportunity. CDBG funds would be used to provide program scholarships to fifty children from low and moderate income households. Tinkertopia has requested operational funding. In their proposal to provide expanded STEAM programming to low and moderate income children and families living in Sunnyside. CDBG funds would be used to hire and train two new employees at Tinkertopia, a science education specialist. And a community outreach specialist. The project proposes to serve three thousand low to moderate income children and youth with in-person or online STEAM learning opportunities. And lastly, Southwest Fair Housing Council proposed a full-service fair housing outreach and media program. Specifically involving English and Spanish print or video public service announcements. A community outreach event or Facebook Live event and two virtual fair housing trainings. CDBG funds would be used for operational support and they propose to serve five thousand individuals citywide. So as you can see, the requested funding is a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars more than the public service amount allowable by HUD. Here are the proposals received in the housing activities category. Including the organization, the project, their funding request, as well as the proposed individuals or households to be served. And you can also see the application score from the ranking committee. Catholic Charities has requested funds for their Closing the Gap program to be used for the purchase of a program facility. Which is a fifteen hundred square foot, three-bedroom. One and three-quarter bathroom house in East Flagstaff to serve as a permanent location for closing the gap. So through this program, residents are provided. Permanent supportive housing and a suitable living environment, as well as supportive services that lead to permanent housing stability. In the first year, this activity would provide permanent supportive housing to eight chronically homeless individuals. Housing Solutions of Northern Arizona is seeking. City of Flagstaff CDBG funds to create an owner-occupied housing rehabilitation program similar to the one previously administered by the City of Flagstaff Housing Section. So this program will provide grants and or no interest, no payment loans to low-income households, enabling them to repair critical home systems. Heating, hot water, roofing, electrical, to ensure their homes are safe and provide a decent and suitable living environment. The HSNA Owner Occupied Housing Rehab Program will ensure low-income owner-occupied households live in decent and safe homes. And the proposal. Proposes to serve five households. Based on the committee's ranking and risk analysis, here are the public service recommendations. You can see on the right, the wide range of ranking scores. To establish this recommendation for council, staff starts with funding the top-ranked proposal and moves down the list essentially until we run out of funding in this category. So we're really excited this year to recommend fully funding the top two proposals. Homeless Youth Connection and Native Americans for Community Action. And partially funding the next Boys and Girls Club of of Flagstaff. Staff spoke with Boys and Girls Club and they have committed to meet the goal of fifty children served even with a partial CDBG funding allocation. They said they will continue to seek funding from other sources to be able to meet that same goal. So staff is recommending again the allocation of slightly less than the HUD allowable amount. As it's safer to budget slightly below that required cap. I've mentioned previously, after subtracting the public service and administration amounts from the total available. There is almost six hundred and fifty thousand available for the housing activities. And that actually exceeds the ask of the two of these two agencies. By ninety-one thousand five hundred and thirty-nine dollars and sixty-seven cents. So this year, we received just two housing activity proposals and staff is recommending to fund these agencies higher than what they requested. Staff spoke with both agencies. And they're each able to utilize the additional funds and really excited to increase the scopes of their projects. So Housing Solutions of Northern Arizona will be able to serve an additional three households. With the additional funds and for Catholic charities, the additional funds will allow them. To provide continued programming for all clients enrolled in the Closing the Gap program. I want to thank you for your time. Again, I'll be back next week asking for the approval of those three resolutions. They're all due to HUD May fifteenth and tonight, I really appreciate any and all feedback and direction from council on the documents discussed. And the funding allocation recommendations, which I'm actually going to pull back up for us so that we can review and discuss.
Thank you, Ms. Pavlik. Wow, you just put so much information. Glass of water. That was awesome. I appreciate all the very efficient. Council, we have comments, questions, a little feedback here. I had, I had a question. So and I assume that, oh, wait, I'm sorry. Yes, thank you, Councilmember Shimon for reminding me. We do have Ms. Harris as a for public comment if you'd like to get her on the line, Ms. Fobar.
Thank you, Mayor DC. I have Ms. Deb Harris on the line. Ms. Harris, you can go ahead and speak now.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor DC, Vice Mayor Daggett, council members. Thank you so much for this opportunity to speak to you tonight. I am here specifically to talk about workforce and affordable housing as they relate to CDBG funds. No more affordable housing, workforce housing in Sunnyside, La Plaza, the Southside neighborhoods until we build. In other areas of the city, specifically the property that we own out on One Haiti near the Cheshire neighborhood. It is my understanding that. Every that we have already spent several hundred thousand dollars to put the infrastructure. Into the land to get ready to build. I also understand that we were ready to move forward with this. And then a group of community members came to counsel and opposed it. If I remember correctly, most of the comments opposing building on this plan was centered around. Concerns about curly dogs and sunflowers that occupy the space. I believe me elected a city council who is more interested in providing quality housing for residents of Flagstaff. Who need this type of housing and who need to have affordable housing. While we are all concerned for wildlife, we also need to be concerned about human life. Many of the people who need this type of housing are in our community are provide vital services to the Flagstaff. They are our first responders, our teachers, work in our service industries, just to name a few. CDBG funds identify La Plaza, Sunnyside and Southside as neighborhoods where these funds can be used. We can use these funds to improve the neighborhoods like open spaces, small parks, sidewalks, other infrastructure items. CDBG funds do not have to only be used to build workforce housing. We have declared a housing crisis for the city and we need to move forward in building more affordable and workforce housing for our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Council, do we have any questions for Ms. Harris? Councilmember McCarthy.
Well. My question is probably more for Ms. Pavlik. Ms. Harris was talking about, if I understood correctly, the Schultz Pass parcel, which her previous council decided. Not to develop, at least at that point in time. But in. Instead of that project, we proposed three projects. One over there by across from REI. And one up. Oh, you know, around town. I don't need to get into the details. But so I asked the 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 housing staff. Are those different monies than what we're talking about tonight? That we would have used to build those three projects? And if I understand, those three projects actually went out to bid. We got a contractor and then for reasons I don't quite understand, the contractor backed out. So can you kind of? Comment on those three projects vis a vis what we're talking about tonight? And that question's for.
Councilmember McCarthy, I think I'll take your question if that's all right.
That would be excellent.
This is Sarah Dar, Housing Director. And it sounds like you're asking for a reminder on what happened with the final disposition of the three scattered site properties, yes?
Well, that's my first question. And then this related is, does that? Is that a different program than the monies we're talking about tonight? Or it is, okay.
Okay, perfection. It's completely different. So the intended funds for the scattered sites. Were the low-income housing tax credit funds administered through the Arizona Department of Housing. These are the CDBG dollars that we receive as an entitlement community directly from HUD. And as a quick reminder on what happened with those three pieces of property is that the developer that was awarded. The project was unable to fulfill the deadlines required. After receiving the allocation of the low-income housing tax credits from the state. And ended up returning those dollars to the state at that time.
Okay, and I presume at some other time in the near future, we will be talking about the scattered sites. And what we might be able to do in the next year or so.
Absolutely. And actually, as part of our. Rad redevelopment of public housing piece. Some of those sites are possible to be developed through that process as well. As well as we've had some ongoing conversations with area nonprofits. Regarding singular pieces of property and the potential for development on them. But have not yet had anything solid to bring forward to you for consideration yet.
And then my last comment is that over the weekend, I had some questions for Ms. Pavlik. And she graciously answered my questions, so I want to thank her publicly.
Thank you. We do appreciate that. We are so lucky to have her on our team. She is certainly a rock star.
She got right back to me.
She's amazing.
Thank you, Councilmember. And I had a question. I hope I'm not getting too diverted off here because we just brought up the scattered site. Is it, are we still, is it still HUD regulation that we can't split up the requirement of this certain amount of? A certain amount of housing on a single plot? We can't chop that up if they say you need to put in at least eighty. Homes, is that correct? Or has that been lifted?
I'll let Sarah Dar take that one because that relates back to those low-income tax credit program requirements.
Okay, and if it's gonna take a long time.
I understood the question. Could you repeat it?
Well, I'll I'll actually save that for later time. We can do that by emails. That's not as related to this agenda item. I will just stick on that. But I'll I'll follow up with you at a later time so we can get to the items at hand here. Council, Vice Mayor has a comment.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you so much, Ms. Pavlik. That was an excellent presentation. As I've stated before, I've worked with staff on these community development block grants. And have for many years scored these grants, been part of the process. And I can assure the public and council that it is a very rigorous process. And that staff knows all the regulations backwards and forwards. So I feel very comfortable with the recommendations that they're putting forward to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Council, Councilmember Shimon.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Pavlik, for the presentation and your timeliness, your timely communication with myself. Along with Councilmember McCarthy with our questions, I really appreciate the communication and your expertise and your efforts here. Ms. Dar, we have a great team of which you are included in and and I'm just so grateful for all the staff. At the city who work on these types of housing topics. I just wanted to say a couple of things. I support the recommendations that staff has presented to us. I think they're good recommendations. And and now I'm going to work through my comments really quick. So I just wanted to express. So I just wanted to express gratitude to the Housing Commission and all the different focus groups. I know that that commission is working hard with liaison Vice Mayor, working with them. And that, those individuals are really doing a great service to the City of Flagstaff. And I'm really looking forward to their recommendations once they do reach the council conversation. I also want to express gratitude to our community partners and the Continuum of Care Group, the COC. That, we couldn't do the good work we're doing in the community without all of our partners. And really, it's an honor to be a partner to you all through the City of Flagstaff. I like the consolidated plan strategies that you outlined, Ms. Pavlik. And I wanted to say that it seems like we're having a shift in our thinking here at the city. And with the recent declaring of a housing emergency by council and just the continued conversation of the importance of housing being at the forefront of our minds, I really think that there is a shift happening at the local level, and I'm proud to be a part of that with all of you. So it's an exciting time to be involved. I wanted just to briefly give kudos and appreciation to all the applicants, the Homeless Youth Connections, NACA, Native Americans for Community Action, the Boys and Girls Club, Southwest Fair Housing Council, and Tinkertopia, along with Catholic Charities and Housing Solutions of Northern Arizona. We really appreciate your efforts in our community. And, yeah, really, really look forward to working with many of you through the CDBG allocation process this go around. Those are my comments, Mayor. Thank you so much for hearing me out, everybody, and thank you for your service to our community.
Thank you, council member. And I'm seeing Councilmember Aslan has put into the chat that these recommendations are perfectly in line with how he prioritized them. Councilmember Sweet has a comment.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Pavlik, for answering my emails and the presentation and making it so easy for us to understand the grant, the grant funds. And I support the recommendations and I'm excited to see the CDBG funds put to good use. Thank you for all of your hard work.
Thank you, Councilmember Sweet. I did have one question, just kind of procedural. But when the agencies apply for the grant, do they specifically apply under the public service proposal or housing activity, or is that decided upon by the, by the evaluation team?
That's a great question, Mayor. So they are asked to identify which category their proposal fits under. But we do request that they have a technical assistance meeting with us just so that we can help them identify which category it fits best under. We're able to kind of explain some of the HUD requirements and how those national and primary objectives come into play between a housing activity and a public service activity. We've also, like in the case of NACA, they had originally applied as an economic development activity, and we were able to tweak the program with them a little bit to make it a public service activity, which makes it a lot more simple for administering, for both them and for the city.
Great. Yeah, I just was curious because of, you know, we have the Homeless Youth Connection as well as the Southwest Fair Housing Council. And I was just wondering why they were in the public service proposal as opposed to the housing activity or if it's more fluid between the two or, yeah, I was just kind of curious about the categorization aspect of that.
Totally. One of the simplest ways, I think, to think about it, and obviously it doesn't go for everything, but housing activities are usually construction activities. They actually create, develop, improve, or rehab or renovate a property. Whereas public service is anytime someone asks for operational funds. And so if they're trying to hire a new employee to provide a service, that would be under public services.
Okay, that's what I had assumed. I just wanted some clarification, so I appreciate that. And as always, wish we always had more money. We have so many great organizations here, and I hope we, as a city or community, can help with the other organizations that either didn't receive full funding or didn't receive funding at this time. But, you know, Tinkertopia, great organization, Southwest Fair Housing Council, Boys and Girls of Flagstaff. So I'm looking forward to seeing what options and where we can maybe help in the future for these very important activities, so, and projects. So with that, I do believe we have council direction on this subject.
Thank you all so very much. I'm really grateful to be a part of this team.
Thank you, Ms. Pavlik. And is that the end of this presentation? Because I'm getting a request for taking a little break before we go into our COVID-19 update.
It sure is. Thank you.
Excellent. All right, well, thank you, team, and let's give, let's just do 10 minutes. So back here at 6:16.
Go ahead.
All right, we are now down to agenda item number 13, our COVID-19 update. Take it away, Ms. Anderson.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Wanted to turn on my camera to say hello before we began the presentation for this evening. I have the COVID update for you. Even though I will be walking you through the slides on my own, I wanted you to know that there's been a lot of work and thought put into the information that you're going to see tonight, not only from our reentry team members, but also our city's leadership team. Tonight, we're going to go over the data, looking through the lens of monitoring criteria, given this will be a point of discussion later in the presentation. We will also look at the existing monitoring criteria and phases from the city's reentry plan so we know what's included currently. And then we will provide some information on reopening of public facilities and follow up on the special event permit from what we discussed during our last meeting on the COVID update on March 30th. And then the last piece will be discussing options of her council's consideration. When we look at the weekly cases, the number of new COVID cases have been on a two-week incline in Flagstaff since we experienced some changes in public interaction in mid-March. It's important to keep in mind when looking at this metric that it can take one to two weeks for an individual to have COVID symptoms after exposure. Following the weekly report ending April 3rd, Flagstaff continues to see a larger number of new COVID cases than we previously experienced. These preliminary numbers include approximately 51 cases since April 3rd. The number of hospital admissions in Coconino County have been on a downward trend since January. We've seen two consecutive weeks of higher numbers with seven hospitalization admissions weending 327 and 43. But prior to that, we were seeing a regular downward trend. The capacity of ICU, emergency department, and medical surgical beds at FMC, the numbers in this middle column here under Flagstaff Medical Center, demonstrate the ability to care for the seriously ill. The number of COVID-related deaths have also been on a downward trend since January. There were a few great periods for weeks ending 227 and 320. Community transmission remains at a moderate level. And our community vaccination continues to grow each week. The most recent weekly report included 42.1% of people in Coconino County are vaccinated. Coconino County Health and Human Services reported approximately 40% of those who are eligible to receive a vaccine have received one. We continue to see lower numbers of positive and pending COVID patients based on this Northern Arizona healthcare census information. Now moving on to the city's reentry plan, I will review the monitoring criteria adopted by city council and what defines Phase 2 and Phase 3 in the plan. Keep in mind, we've made some changes as we have seen COVID transmissions start to come down following the holiday season. The city's monitoring criteria looks for a downward trajectory of four weeks or more for the number of COVID cases, hospitalization, and COVID-related deaths. We look for the demonstrated ability of individuals to follow CDC guidelines and the capacity within the healthcare system to care for the seriously ill. And lastly, the ability to provide testing, monitoring, and contact tracing, which is mostly provided by our Coconino Health and Human Services Department, as well as some assistance from the state. Currently, Phase 2 of the reentry plan includes city operations and meetings functioning remotely other than those essential services such as public safety and inspection services. These are provided in person and on-site. In addition, there are a few facilities that have remained open in Phase 2, such as the municipal court, which we heard from earlier today, the visitor's center, and the Jay Lively Ice Arena. Special events are limited to 50 people in Phase 2, and outdoor parks and court amenities are open, are field permits. Can it include up to 100 people per field? And travel and group gatherings are either suspended or attended remotely. The difference in Phase 3 includes most facilities opening to the public. However, COVID mitigation efforts such as meeting remotely, closure of seating areas, and protective measures such as physical barriers, guides, and limiting entrance to certain areas will continue. Special events and other permits may become less limited. And there can be some travel to areas where there is minimal COVID transmission levels. Reopening of city facilities in Phase 3 may include standard operating hours for most city facilities. The recreation and library facilities will open according to the guidelines in the site-specific plans. These are at the end of the city's reentry plan. These limit the number of participants and the hours of operations in these plans to phase in operations over time. It allows us to build capacity for staffing while maintaining a safe environment for customers and staff. We would recommend the maintenance of COVID mitigation measures for all city facilities and properties as demonstrated on the screen. We began discussing special event permits during the last COVID update on March 30th. To review, outdoor special event permits are currently approved up to 50 individuals. The city code also includes a special event ordinance that allows for conditions requiring the permitee or event producer to provide for the health and safety of the public and events that present unreasonable danger to the health or safety may be denied. CDC recommends physical distancing for larger gatherings as well as other healthy behaviors to reduce the spread of COVID. Some of those examples are listed here on the screen, and we've provided a link to where you can find the more detailed information on the CDC website. So here are some options for council to consider and discuss related to the reopening of city facilities. Following this discussion, we will move to the options specific to special events held outdoors and on city property for council discussion.
Thank you, Deputy City Manager. Council, I'd like to get your input on this. Oh, yes, Ms. Fobar, my apologies. Let's get these public comments for this. Thank you for the reminder.
Please leave those options up.
Do we have the public comments on the line? All right, just a minute here trying to get the folks on the line, so.
Mayor DC, I have Art Babbitt on the line. Art, you can go ahead and give your comments now.
Great. Thank you, Mayor and members of council. I'm Robert Babbitt for 21 West Cedar. My wife and I and managers separate the Flagstaff community markets for 21 years. I really appreciate the dialogue and discussion that's been going on on how we kind of re-infiguring our community responsibly and appropriately. And, you know, my comments tonight are not a whole lot dissimilar, but just encouraging you to adopt policies for events, not just a community market, but for other events which reflects the community and the outdoor events. You're inherently very, very low risk. And that is coupled with the current vaccination picture that is getting painted into Coconino County. The county just had 100,000 vaccine. We have 14 centers open in the greater Flagstaff area. A seven-day-a-week center is opening this next week. There's a three-day, no reservation, event like Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. And, you know, the reality plays out anyway. Months of vaccine being 18 and over in Coconino County, you get. And, you know, it's my belief that should be the primary criteria and kind of key criteria for how we are responsibly anticipatory for where we are with regard to pandemic care communities. And, you know, we are believed that event managers using good public health safety protocols and public health relational outcomes can run events very, very responsibly with limited restrictions on the number of attendees. Anyone who wants a vaccine can get one. Those who are choosing not to get a vaccine by not making that decision, you know, I don't believe should be impacting those of us who are taking those steps. It's not a judgment for those who aren't getting it. It's just, you know, given the opportunity, it's expanding, it's continuing to expand. I'm not getting anxious, I can get an appointment tomorrow. And for events that are, you know, in large outdoor areas, ours is around 45,000 square feet, not including the grass. We really believe we can do those responsibly and manage well so that it brings back that vitality, that economic and community vitality that we need to engage responsibly at this time. So appreciate your conversations and demonstrations and I encourage you to, you know, let our events be centered with management aspects of public health-focused outcomes. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Mr. Babbitt. Council, do we have any comments or questions to Mr. Babbitt? Councilmember Aslan, followed by Councilmember Shimon.
Yes, Mr. Babbitt, it's always great to talk to you, and thank you for weighing in with us here. I understand that you're advocating for some very good reasons to open up for economic vitality and otherwise. I do have some questions for you about CDC recommendations. Sounds like we're still talking about six feet apart, even outdoors. What are your thoughts on that? And I remember a couple of weeks ago, with all due respect, it seemed like you were trying to play a little bit of fun math games with staff versus public. And I just don't think the science differentiates between those sorts of things. So I'm wondering if you can square that circle a little bit for me.
Well, I guess I'm not sure what you're referencing. We reference what is the reality in Coconino County, Colorado, which is one person per 150 square feet. That's not a, that's not a math game, that's just a metrics they use. You know, to me, that's a reasonable place to start. I mean, and we've all heard Dr. Phil Bell's presentations on numbers of vaccinated and the conservative estimate that two to three times has been... that two to three times has been, you know, exposed to the virus who's tested for the virus. So, you know, I believe in a 45,000 square foot lot, we can absolutely safely handle several hundred people, just like it's done indoors, you know, day in and day out. And we do it infinitely more safely, just like there is no viral loading that occurs outdoors. That is the nature of being outdoors. There's no viral loading.
Well, there is some viral loading. I mean, the risk is much reduced, but I'm going to listen to the CDC when they say that that six-feet distance still needs to be maintained outside. And in fact, I do know people who have contracted coronavirus outside. There's not many of them, and I agree that the risk is much reduced, and especially among vaccinated individuals and those who are still wearing masks. But didn't you try to differentiate between the numbers shouldn't include staff for the farmer's market?
Oh, my observation, there's no funny math there. What it is, is the observation that if you put a cap on the people who are there to help hygiene and manage and implement good protocols, my point is, don't disincentivize people, extra people being there to improve the public health outcomes. That's, that's
Well, I don't know how you do that without doing a little bit of cutting the corners on the math. I mean, the numbers are the numbers. A total number of individuals is what the rubric needs to be. But anyway, I had one other point I wanted to make, and I apologize that I'm sort of using you as my dartboard here. I actually deeply respect you and your thoughts, and my wife and I have some of these same arguments going back and forth. But one thing I just wanted to add to the conversation is I understand that those who can get the vaccine, especially in Coconino County, now can get it, or anybody who wants it should be able to get it. And I think that is an important threshold for us to achieve, absolutely. And I also understand that we can't just keep, you know, mitigating the effects of those who aren't willing to play by the rules. The problem there fundamentally is that the virus doesn't care who's playing by the rules and who's not. And if we are creating situations prematurely where we are in a place where transmission is possible, we could be creating super strains of this virus that bring us back to square one in terms of people not being immune to what's going around. And I think that needs to stay in consideration for this council body when we have these conversations. We had, the last two weeks, I was, you know, I didn't see the numbers I wanted to see. We're experiencing a little bit of a bump, and we're still in moderate transmission levels. And I would go so far as to call this the doozy bump, if I could give it a name, because I think we're seeing the impact of slowing down before we cross the finish line. And anyways, I might have some more comments about this as we move forward. But thank you very much, Mr. Babbitt, for being a sounding board for me on this.
Appreciate it.
And then Councilmember Shimon has a comment for you, Mr. Babbitt.
Thank you, Mayor. And I just wanted to say thank you for tuning in, taking the time to tune in to our council meeting and advocating for us to move forward and take that leap. I know it's scary, and it's frightening to us as a council body, as it is to the supervisors, which you used to be a part of. But I think it's time, and I agree with your comments, and I look forward to the council discussion. But I just wanted to express gratitude for you, to you, for taking the time to reach out to us and for your advocacy. Thank you.
Thanks for the opportunity. Really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Babbitt. Do we have the other callers on the line? Were we able to get ahold of them?
Hi, Mayor and Council. Mr. Ziegler, you can go ahead and speak now.
Hi, I wanted to just say, I'm Matt Ziegler. I am with the Flagstaff Hallowabaloos and Cornucopia Festivals, as well as Heritage Square Trust, which puts on some of the free events downtown in Flagstaff on Heritage Square. I want to thank you for considering these issues. And I just wanted to say that the current, the city's current reopening metrics state there can be no events of more than 250 people until there's a return to pre-COVID conditions. Unfortunately, despite our best efforts, this will never happen. Dr. Fauci and a whole host of public health experts have said there's not going to be a clear end of the pandemic. COVID is not going to be eradicated. The current reopening metrics were created months ago, and the criteria for Phase Four, or getting back to normal, are wildly unrealistic. Our understanding of COVID and its future implications on the reopening of our society are clearer now than when the metrics were first put into place. Current case counts and community spread are important to consider. I believe one other crucially important metric is the vaccination rate. A vaccine did not exist when the metrics were created. The fact that Coconino now has over 42% of our population fully vaccinated is heartening. The metrics need to be updated to reflect what we have learned since last year to take into account the fact that we will never return to pre-COVID conditions. I think we can all agree that acting with an abundance of caution has served the community well over the most of the course of the pandemic. I also believe we've come to a juncture where the abundance of caution can begin to be tempered. We've come to a point when we don't need a sledgehammer because a mallet and a well-thought-out plan can achieve the same public health results we're all seeking, while at the same time allowing event planners like myself to start to get back to work. A study was released last week out of Ireland showing since March 2020, one in 1,000 cases in that country were traced to outdoor transmission. That means 99.9% of the COVID cases throughout the entire pandemic in Ireland were caught indoors. The data is abundantly clear on this issue. The outdoors is not a place where significant transmission of COVID occurs. The idea that indoor and outdoor events should be treated identically as they currently are has no basis in science, and we need metrics that reflect that. This immense, yet potentially exhilarating challenge before all of us tonight is the creation of reimagined metrics that will enable us essentially to come to terms and live with COVID in ways commensurate with previous generations' successful efforts to control and live with such lethal diseases as influenza, chickenpox, and HIV/AIDS. Without clear guidance, very soon, we simply won't have time to plan the Hallowabaloos. For the second year in a row, we will need to cancel the event. This process truly does take months, and we're getting to the point that we can only pull off our rescheduled August event if we start moving forward very soon. The easiest action now would be to kick the can down the road. I'm asking for your leadership and wisdom to find creative and forward-thinking solutions to help us move forward in this next phase, where we can both continue to protect the public with data-driven mitigation measures and creative solutions, while at the same time allowing small businesses like mine to be able to reopen. As a professional event planner, I would ask the council to go with option number two in the reopening options, so we have an actual date we can plan around. In the event permit options, I would like to see council choose option number one, which includes mitigation efforts, but does not impose a one-size-fits-all-capacity number on events, as they're all unique and different. Thank you very much for your time and your consideration on this issue.
Thank you, Mr. Ziegler. Council, do we have any questions for Mr. Ziegler? I'm not seeing any in the chat box, and thank you again, and we'll move on to the last caller.
I feel. Very briefly.
Mayor DC, I have Jennifer Grogan on the line. Jennifer, you can go ahead and speak now.
Hello, Mayor and Councilmembers. Jennifer Grogan. I own Peak Events, and I produce the Flagstaff Blues Festival and the Flagstaff Oktoberfest. And like Matt and Art, sorry, I am calling about events in Flagstaff. Our industry was hit the hardest with COVID. Unlike restaurants, we couldn't do to-go events. We couldn't do virtual events and make money. And we're looking at now a second year of probably closing our businesses because we cannot seem to figure out how to do this properly. And my concern is that I can walk into Walmart or Target, and there is no six-feet distancing. There is no limited amount of people in those buildings. And I don't understand the difference then of events being outdoors versus going to Target or Walmart right now. And so I'm hoping that council can also understand that we're all businesses, and letting us decide what is best for our business should be up to us. And I've emailed all of you, and I gave the example of Saks, Post, and salsa Brava. Neither one of them are going back to full capacity just because the governor said they could, but somebody like the Museum Club is because they both know what's best for their own business. And I just feel like we're getting the short end of the stick all because we don't have a brick-and-mortar location that we happen to use, city or private property. And with that, I, as a business owner, canceled my Blues Festival long before anyone on council told me I could or couldn't have the event because I knew that was what's best for my business. So I'm hoping that council can look at everything just a little bit broadly and understand that we desperately need to get back to our businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Grogan. Council, do we have any comments or questions, Ms. Grogan? Well, I'll just say that, Ms. Grogan, I greatly appreciate your attentiveness to the public health aspect and how proactive you've been through this to ensure public health despite the financial difficulties and the risks to your business associated. So I just want to say thank you. With that being said, we are, I'll pull this back here now to city council discussion. And I want to premise a few things as we start this out. First of all, outdoor events are not 100% safe. This data is, when you close all outdoor events, then guess what? There's not outdoor events to get data on that it spreads. There are a few cases where it does spread. One of the largest superspreader events was the Sturgis Bike Rally that led to, I believe, it didn't get fully vetted yet with peer review, but 160,000 cases in the country came from that one event. Our former president got COVID from an outdoor event, including two senators, where an outdoor rose garden, 200 people, led to 34 individuals getting infected. So I think we need to realize that when we're talking about, oh, this doesn't happen in outdoors, that's because it hasn't had as much opportunity to actually happen because of these closed-down measures. And that's why we're seeing it more in backyard barbecues, because those were not closed down. So I just want to make sure people realize that saying that there's no risk or that it is so minimal we shouldn't be considering it is a farce, which is why that CDC guideline specifically states that we still need to be away from six feet apart. Another part of the guidelines specifically stated for CDC risk factors is the length of time one is around each other. One of the reasons we don't see this happening in grocery stores is because you're walking down the aisle, and people aren't hanging out there for a half an hour, an hour, three hours, et cetera. So I'm happy to continue this discussion. I'll give my two cents on a couple of these ideas. But I just want to premise that because I feel like we continue going down the road of, oh, well, it's outdoors, so everything's fine. No. And I'm all for doing, looking at these events, but going to, oh, no capacity limits all of a sudden is something that I don't think is the right way. And I do like the idea of doing a certain square footage per person, per attendant, and we can get more into that here soon. But I do want, as we do this discussion, maybe I should put it in the chat box, but look at what the CDC is saying about these events outdoors and take them into consideration during our discussion. But with that, I will go to a couple of council members here. Councilmember Shimon, followed by Councilmember Aslan.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, staff, for the presentation. I want to thank the public who called in and everyone who's listening in as well. Mayor, I think that as we move forward, people don't think everything is fine. I think that our community has experienced hell for this past year, and I think that this experience has really shaken up our culture and our society to its core. I think that things will never be the same moving forward, regardless of COVID. I think we've learned a lot from this pandemic, and our culture has forever been changed. And as we move forward, regardless of the regulations we put in place, the community is going to make decisions that are based on their experiences and their understanding of how to best navigate the circumstances in their own health and in the community's health. So I think that the county has done an excellent job with the vaccine rollouts. I mean, 60, almost 62,000 individuals have had their first dose, 42,300, so 42,306 fully vaccinated. And when you look at the adult population above 18, that's a significant number of the population in our county. 42.1% of our population has been fully vaccinated, okay? That's huge. Is it ever going to be 100% safe, you know, for outdoor events specifically? Probably not, right? It's not 100%, but it's pretty darn safe. And I think, Council, I think it's time. I think it's time we really take some leadership and move the needle on our regulations because of the vaccine rollouts. I am way more concerned about indoor events than outdoor events personally. And Mayor, not to, you know, you know, go back and forth with you on this, but with the bike rally, I agree with you, that was an issue, and that was an outdoor event. But that was also pre-vaccine rollouts, right? That was before 42% of the population has been vaccinated. This is a different time that we're working within and a different reality that we're operating within. So on Slide 1, just going to my comments on the two options that we're looking at, the two proposals that the council is considering tonight. Council, I think that we need to pick a date to reopen our facilities and start working through our site-specific plans. And so that's option two on Slide 1 of our considerations for the evening. And I would advocate that that date be May 1st. I think that gives us enough time to get ready for that opening, and I think that is appropriate for us to do. And I think the time is now. I really do. I really think it's time that we do that. On the second slide, Mayor and Council, I think that we should go to option number one and put that decision in the hands of the organizers and the public. At this point, you know, after having seen how the public has responded to the governor's orders the past couple of weeks in Flagstaff, I am so proud of our community. You know, are we perfect? No. But I think that I have full faith in our community to continue to do what is right for the community at large. And understanding the outdoor transmission rates being a very low number, I really feel comfortable removing the capacity limitation. Like the public speaker mentioned, we don't regulate the number of people going into Walmart or into our restaurants or other businesses. Why should we limit the number of folks gathering outdoors where we know it's safer, and we want to encourage those types of gatherings? I'm wrapping up here, Mayor. Yeah, I think it's time we let the producers determine how to handle their efforts and let the public determine how they want to engage. Those are my comments. Option two for Slide 1, with May 1st being that date that we open back up, and option one on Slide 2. Thank you. And Council, I'm really curious to hear your thoughts. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Shimon. Councilmember Aslan.
Thank you, Mayor. Boy, I'm not even sure, I'm trying to begin with all this. Councilmember Shimon, with all due respect, I'm so glad that you think it's time. But I'm not going to listen to your opinion on when we should reopen. This is a matter of public health. It's not a matter for debate. It truly is not. We are not there yet. I'm glad that you think it's safe to go outdoors and that you don't see a difference between being indoors at the grocery store and outdoors at the farmer's market. The science declares that there is a difference, okay? For all the reasons that the mayor mentioned, transmission rates can still be significant in outdoor events, and that's what the science says. And I'm just going to kind of popcorn-rang through some of this because there's been so much said that needs to be debunked here. It's not true that Dr. Fauci is never going to say that we can't take our masks off. I am optimistic, and I believe that that day is right around the corner sometime this summer. And it will be determined by a metric that is built upon And it will be determined by a metric that is that is built upon by a very informed group of a community of scientists who are looking at the data and epidemiologists who understand pandemics and virus transmission better than we do here on this council. It's really an easy conversation. We need to be following the recommendations of the CDC to the nail. As a scientist, I, that's where I'm going to stake my claim. And it's, it's not about economic vitality. And I just, I can't be more plain about it. We could end up with a virus that is resistant to our immunity efforts right now. And that would be the worst economic outcome that we could possibly imagine. There are still people catching this disease. There are still people dying from it. I am very encouraged that our hospital capacity is good right now. I've spoken with nurses the past week and 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 folks are feeling very optimistic. We only have a few cases in our hospital right now and and people seem to be surviving them, which is great. But this, this virus has not gone away yet. And this is not a, a topic for, for six, it's for seven local people who don't have a background in the complexities of the medical and epidemiological consequences of all this to be just throwing random numbers around like May 1st and unlimited capacity. This is stuff that's being made up and we have guidelines that we can follow that are being given to us by experts. I don't understand why there's a debate here. Yes, transmission levels are going to be much reduced outdoors and that is encouraging. And I think, as the one speaker said, we can, we can, well, as, as, as several of our speakers mentioned, we can find a way to make sure that that some events can, 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 we can start planning for them this summer. I would love to see that. But I'm really confused about the second slide, if you can go to it. Option number one seems to be fallacious to me. I don't know how we can focus on COVID mitigation efforts that align with CDC guidelines and not limit number of attendees when CDC guidelines specifically state we need to limit the number of attendees based on density. I, I mean, I, I'm not even sure where a lot of this is coming from. And, you know, this, we, there is a finish line to this. We will be able to take our masks off when we're around each other soon. And it's based on, you know, the, the number of people who are, who are getting vaccinated. And we will reach that point. You know, I, I just, I, who is going to hire an Olympic coach who tells their star athlete to go ahead and slow down on the final 100 meter approach to the finish line during the race? It's just, it's just completely unheard of and it's really not confusing to me. I understand that, that, that people want to, you know, have autonomy and decision making and that, and that most of the folks we're talking about and with will do their best to make very responsible decisions. But the fact is that we're talking about events on city property. This, this is our wheelhouse. We are in, we're not in charge of how many people go into Walmart. We are in charge of how many people use our facilities and the way that that behavior is conducted on those facilities. And we need to hold the line until we're across the finish line. I think that there is a way that we can. I, I, I would like to, can we go back to the other slide? I'm, I'm, I'm kind of, you know, vacillating between option one and option two. I think, I, I think we should definitely maybe be having this conversation weekly or at tops every two weeks. Because, you know, the data matters and what we're seeing come in matters. And what we're seeing the CDC say matters, especially as more and more people are getting vaccinated. We should be able to fluidly react to that for the and and it's, it's important for us to be able to act quickly if things change. Because that's, that's how, that's how we are responsible to our, our city's economic vitality and, and, and all the activities and businesses that are looking to our, our support. You know, we are showing leadership by holding the line here. This, that, it's very unpopular right now to, to continue following CDC recommendations. But it's really not incumbent upon us to bow to the will of an antsy public that is prematurely ready to get back to normal. We have an obligation to public safety and to our residents and constituents here in Flagstaff to keep them safe and to do what we know is right. And the science tells us that we need to hold the line. And I'll stop rambling now.
Thank you, Councilmember Aslan. Deputy City Manager, do you want to explain the option one?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Aslan. I wanted to quickly go over the event permit options. We still would be focusing on wearing the mask and the physical distancing as recommended by the CDC. But we would be focusing on the CDC requirements instead of picking a number like saying you can have 50 people or 100 people or you can have 200 people that we would really just be looking at, okay, based on the space, what you're doing there. We would be focusing on the physical distancing that would be required, wearing masks along with the other items.
Oh, I like that one then. Sign me up for that option.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember and Deputy City Manager. If we could, as Anderson, if you could open up the, what I posted in the chat box, the considerations for events and gatherings from the CDC. I think that would be good to have in front of us just for a minute to show what the risk factors to consider are based on the CDC. Is there a way you could pop that on the screen?
Yes, I'm pulling it up now.
Thank you. And then I'll get to you, Councilmember McCarthy. Apologies. I just, I just want to make sure that we know what we're saying when it comes to the CDC guidelines and just down to the risk factors to consider.
I am fine, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember. So just pointed out here, length of the event for anything for a total of 15 minutes or more being within six feet of someone. I personally don't see how we can do that without having a capacity for events. And that should be calculated on this, on square footage. The, as you can see here, number and crowding of people at the events, behavior of attendees during an event. But I just want to make sure everyone is clear. The CDC, even when outside, at large gatherings, at events, is still saying six feet apart. So doing an unlimited cap capacity would, a lot of the times, you know, I, I understand that a lot of these events we have that will be well managed all the best. But when we're talking a bunch of people who've been cooped up for a year, we can't control everyone's behavior on, on those grounds and neither can the businesses. Especially when we're talking large, large events. So I just want, as we talk about this, to realize that, well, I don't want to do anything that is going to violate CDC standards and go against what is medically sound from coming from the highest institution to evaluate this that we have that spent billions and billions of dollars to come to these results. So with that, we can go back to the options one, two, and three. I just wanted, before we go to Councilmember McCarthy, I just wanted us all to be very clear on what we are being suggested from the federal government regarding our events and how we should be rolling them out. Councilmember McCarthy.
Thank you, Mayor. Just have a couple of thoughts. One is based on the trends we're seeing. We're definitely not there yet. I mean, things are actually not decreasing. They're going up. That, that's a short term thing. I think one of the major things that crosses my mind is that when everyone that wants to get a vaccination has gotten a vaccination, that would be a significant event. And I, by a vaccination, I basically mean if it's a two vaccination series, that they would be fully vaccinated. We're not there yet. 40% have seen it. And I admit that there may be some people that never want to get vaccinated. So I'm not going to worry about them. But we're not quite at the point where everyone that wants to get vaccinated is. I think we're getting there, maybe within a month, we'll be there. I am sensitive to the needs of businesses. And, and, you know, that kind of makes me think, well, maybe it would make sense to set a date. May 1st is radically too early. I'm thinking of something, maybe something in June. I'm thinking more of like July 4th. And why would I pick a date that far out? Well, by then, the people that want to get the vaccine will have had a chance to get the vaccine. And, you know, and had it in their body for a couple of weeks. You know, the day you're vaccinated, it really doesn't work. It takes some time to, you know, for your body to react to it and make it effective. So I'm thinking something like July 4th because I think all the people that want to get vaccinated should have a chance by then. Hopefully, the, the trends will be down by then. So going to the slides. I guess I'm open minded about option two, picking a date. And option three, what I'm saying I would include in new monitoring criteria would be have people had a chance to get the vaccine? So it's kind of a combination of all three of those in my mind. As far as the second slide. The CDC guidelines, as the mayor pointed out, the CDC knows way amount, way more about immunology than we do. And the way that vaccines, excuse me, viruses are transmitted. So I think we definitely need to take into account the CDC guidelines. I think we could go to option two, which basically says, well, okay, we're going to allow events, for instance, the farmer's market. I think it would make sense to say, okay, we could open the farmer's market and only allow in a certain number of people. I think that makes sense. To me, that's very analogous to when I go to the grocery store. I go to the grocery store every week and we all wear masks, or most of us, and that's working. So I think we could do that. My concern is, say, at a rock concert or something, people aren't going to be spread out like they would be at a farmer's market. They're going to be up at the front of the stage and they're going to be two feet apart or one feet apart. So I'm a little concerned with that. So I guess I'm not giving any real definitive ABC answer, but that's kind of where my head's at. Am I making sense or do I need to refine that?
I, well, I'll defer to city staff on that, but I, I think I, I hear you that, you know, that it basically that it shouldn't be an unlimited number of attendees.
I agree with that.
And that the date that we set should be farther down the road. If we do go the route of the date, it should be farther down the road than the May 1st that was suggested by Shimoney. That was, I got that boiled down a little bit.
It may be that we could allow people to get closer together than six feet if we go with a date like July 1st. Like if, for instance, it might make sense to open up farmer's market, just as an example. Say by the 1st of June or maybe May 15th. Because we would be allowing, we would have a limited number of people and I'm assuming that they would tend to stay apart. Where if we're a situation where they're going to tend to gather up like at the front of the stage, then that date would be farther out like July 4th. So I think that maybe refines what I'm, where I'm going a little bit. So I'll leave it at that, but I'm not going anywhere if you guys got questions.
Thank you, Councilmember. Let's get through all the base comments of everyone and then we can refine it collectively where we want to go. So. Thank you, Councilmember Sweet.
Thank you, Mayor. Back to the first slide. That one for me is pretty easy. I definitely think option two and figuring out a date that's comfortable for all of us. That way we can at least start getting prepped for opening. I imagine there, there will be a lot of protocols that will need to be in place and that takes time. So I think that one's easy for me. Slide two. It's a tough one because I really, I want to empower our community and our event planners. And that's hard because it's so, we can't predict the future. This whole year has been, you know, just one unexpected event after another. But, you know, our event planners need to have directions so that they can book the acts. They can get all of their protocols in place. It's going to be triple as hard to get the event going than it was in the past because of all the new measures they need to take. So I'm, you know, I think, is there a compromise? Can we, you know, say maybe option one or two and go from there and maybe figure out a calculation? Or say that we're going to go with option one and really go with those CDC guidelines that do say the masks, they do say, say physical distancing. And we let the promoter say or know that that, those are our expectations. And until the CDC changes that, that's what we're going to expect. It's tough. I, we're in a difficult place, but I do feel that, you know, we do need to start reopening. The outs, outdoor events are different than indoors in my mind, although I know they're not 100% safe. But I, I think it is time and I do agree with that. So I would love to hear more conversation and I'd love to figure out a compromise so that we can get some definitive guy, guidance to our event planners. I think they, they really do deserve and need that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sweet. Councilmember Solis.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for the discussion. And and passion for, for, you know, public health. And, you know, we take this, this responsibility of ensuring that we reopen our, our city facilities responsibly, safely, cautiously. I just want to refresh everyone's memory of Dr. Engel Thaler's presentation about two weeks ago. And, and I quote that, you know, we, let's hold out another month. And we're nearing that another month and the virus will continue to be in the community. But our, our community with, you know, with the very aggressive vaccination and, you know, in, in our city and in, within our county and, you know, kudo to, to our county health services. And we've seen the, the, even NAU has opened, is opening up vaccination on campus and opening up to, to, I believe, 16 or 18 years older, 16, 16 years and older. So you know, I, I am relying on science. And as Dr. Engel Thaler said, use science as a tool to eliminate the best way to serve humanity. So looking ahead, in the next four weeks, we will have more members of our community and hopefully in our state vaccinated and hopefully fully vaccinated. And and I am inviting everyone to expand their awareness. And perhaps we could consider for this slide on re-enti plan, reopening options is to do a combination of all three. But pick a future date. I'm hoping, you know, between May 15 and, and, and June, June 15. And then but constantly monitoring the criteria with the updated criteria of vaccination measurement. I'm also very mindful of the CDC guidelines, but the CDC guidelines have been updated over a month ago. So it does not take into account So it does not take into account, you know, um, nationwide bas, uh, aggressive vaccination efforts by, uh, the, our president Biden, uh, administration. So a combination of three, but setting a date and, and it's a moving target. So we can allow, uh, uh, business and event planners to plan ahead for the events. Also, I want to share with everyone that the, uh, Coconino County is, is accepting vendor applications for the county fair. Some of you may know that that was one, my job with, with, one of my jobs with the county is promoting the county fair for seven years. But they have a statement that, you know, a decision will be made sometime in June, whether or not the county fair is going to happen uh, physically, because last year was all virtual for the four age show and the auction. Uh, but they are opening the possibility for, for, for vendors. So, um, there's some planning, uh, that's going on, but they haven't made the decision yet whether or not to conduct a county fair in person. And that will be made in June. And then for, for the other option, this one, thank you, thank you, Ms. Anderson, for, for this, um, switching to this slide. I would like to see a combination of, um, the option one, two, one and two. Because we want, we are very mindful of the COVID mitigation efforts in alignment with CDC, but also, um, looking into, um, the capacity calculator for, uh, specifically for outdoor events and event type. Again, every event is different. You know, there's, there's a two hour event, there's a four hour event, there's a full day event, there's a three day event. So it's, we have to let the event planners who are expert and excel in their own field to decide to do with their respective events. Thank you.
Thank you, council member Solis, and thanks for that information regarding the fair. That they would be making that decision in June but are prepping. Uh, Vice Mayor Daggett.
Thanks much. Um, thank you to my colleagues for this, um, great discussion and debate. And I too appreciate everyone's, um, desire to uphold our duty to, um, public health. So I, I, I would like to see us pick a date in the future so that our event planners can at least start planning. I would also like to see the farmer's market kept in a different category as, as an entity that provides food. And as an entity where, um, there's a lot of movement and not a lot of, um, standing in one place. Additionally, there's no alcohol, which is another thing that, that concerns me about big outdoor events. Is just kind of the, um, intoxication and the lack of judgment that often comes with that. So I'm wondering if we can consider the farmer's market separately. And I would like to set a date. And, um, and also I could see doing a hybrid between one and two. I would like us to keep up our message of, uh, wearing masks and physically distancing. And, um, maybe a capacity calculator would be helpful in the meantime before we feel like, um, it's okay to open everything up to unlimited. I mean, hope, hopefully we will get to the point where we'll feel very comfortable with unlimited, um, capacity. So that's, that's where I'm coming down right now. So thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Council member Aslan.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, boy, I really appreciate this conversation, and, uh, you know, I'm sorry if I, I was getting a little, um, passionate there earlier. Uh, but I just, I feel very strongly that we have the answers in front of us. And, uh, they're, they're very well researched answers, and we need to just be looking up and, and getting our recommendations from the, the best place of knowledge that they're coming from. That said, um, I do have a question and then a couple of follow-up comments, just because I'm here, I might as well say them. The, the question is, um, what is the CD saying, uh, what's the latest that the CDC is saying around that percentage threshold of, of, uh, population vaccinated, um, for reaching community immunity? Does anybody know that answer offhand, or?
Um, well, I don't have the verification, but when I've spoken with, uh, in individuals smarter than me. They said, they really, we don't know yet because we haven't gotten there, but it could be seventy percent, it could be ninety-five percent.
Okay.
We, we don't know, but I have not heard anything below, uh, seventy percent as a real potential that it would, to that point.
And you're, you're around forty percent here in Coconino County, and that's just our county. Nationally, the, the number is far below that. Is that correct?
Nationally, we, I just had it pulled up, sorry.
Knows how to look up data.
Thank you. I think it's, uh, nationally twenty-two point three percent.
Yeah, so, and you know, part of my point here too is, and I think this is relevant. Um, you know, there's, there's a lot of things that are particular to Flagstaff that come into our policy decisions. Um, and it's important to acknowledge those things. Flagstaff is a tourist destination. Uh, when, when we're talking about these events, we're also talking about tourism dollars and drawing in tourists. And I think, I don't know what the answer is, but I think it's a relevant point of conversation to be aware that just because we're getting up around forty, fifty, sixty percent vaccinated here in Coconino County. Uh, we have a, a mighty influx of regular tourist community out there. Um, especially as we head into the summer, that are mixing into that population and reducing the overall number of vaccinated in any given gathering of people. I think it's important to keep that in mind. I don't know what it means, uh, but I, but I think it, it, it puts its thumb on the scale a little bit. So since I'm here, I just wanted to mention that, that, you know, I, I said originally that I'm kind of going back and forth between option one and two on the first slide. I'm hearing a majority of council, uh, pining for a date certain, and I think that's okay. And I actually, um, I, I, I would like to suggest June fifteenth as that date. Uh, and again, it's kind of arbitrary. Um, but it seems to be a bit of a compromise between July fourth and the first of May, which is way, way too early. Um, and it, that does give plenty of extra time for vaccinations to occur here in Coconino County, in the city of Flagstaff, and around the country, uh, as, as we get tourists from around the country coming in. And, you know, it's, it's early enough in the summer that hopefully event planners can, can plan around that and, 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 um, may, uh, and then the other thing I wanted to make sure of is that is predicated upon the ability for us to put the brakes on that date if, if all hell breaks loose and things fall apart. Um, and I'm not, and I, I would, I would, I would want to make that, um, that, that trigger a pretty, a pretty strenuous one. So we're, we're not just, you know, loosely going, ah, well, the numbers dipped a little bit, so let's put, put the kibosh on all this stuff. If we're going to have a date certain, um, we're going to want to put it there so that our community and our event planners have a certain amount of, of confidence, uh, moving forward. And so it'll be more and more important to lock in that date as we get closer to it. But there should still be some sort of, um, you know, backdoor option. Uh, if we're seeing, uh, you know, a, a really unexpected and bad, um, degradation or backsliding of, of our results here. And then I, I also, I, I, you know, considering Mr. Babett and, and his argument about farmer's market. And that really resonates with me, actually, and, and Vice Mayor Daggett mentioned it as well, and we've been talking about it. That, thinking of a farmer's market as a, um, uh, an essential food vendor, I, I think is, is how we should think of farmer's markets. And there, there does seem to be a bit of a discrepancy in the way we treat our grocery stores and way, and the way we treat our outdoor farmer's markets. And I under, I appreciate that tension. And I, I really, um, you know, from a sustainability and a social justice perspective, I think it's important that we consider farmer's markets as essential food service providers. So what that means, I'm not sure, but I, I do rely foundationally on the basic math we're being given from the CDC. And if that means that we're, we're limiting the amount of time that people are supposed to be, um, milling about in the farmer's market uh, within the parameters of, of the area defined, and that we are counting the number of people within that area at all times. Then I, I think that is acceptable. And again, I don't want to be misheard. I, I do understand that risk of transmission is much lower outdoors. But it is also important to repeat that it is not zero. And, uh, you know, I had an example, but I think the mayor did a good job of providing some really, um, high press examples of, 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 of just stating very plainly the reality that you can transmit coronavirus outdoors. The risk is not zero. Um, so those are my additional thoughts, and, uh, thank you for, for the additional time.
Thank you, council member. Uh, council member Shimonie.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council members, for the lively discussion. Um, I think that this is definitely a topic that a lot of us are very passionate about. And it's been a year, you know, we've been dealing with this for a year, and, um, as much as I want to say we're back to normal. I, I definitely am not, um, blind to the reality, and I am considering the reality. And, and I do believe in patience, and I'm not just, you know, losing my, my cool and my mental health here in, in saying all these things. But I, I guess I really believe in kind of the advocacy that you've heard from me, council. I, I really do believe that it's safe and we're able to do the things I've mentioned, but obviously we work as a body, and I really respect that body decision by council. So, uh, just a couple of comments as we're starting to wrap up the conversation there. You know, the CDC guidelines being over a month outdated is somewhat concerning to me, given the vaccine rollout that we've seen across the nation. As council member Solis mentioned, I, I think that those, those guidelines are out of date. I think when we're talking about the percentage of the community that is vaccinated, we also need to keep in mind that adults are really the population we're, we're concerned about. And, and that the, the percentage is a lot higher when you factor out the youth. When I look at the two slides, Mayor, that we're considering here with our options. One is in regards to our, our facilities, right? And one is in regards to our, our events and our permits, right? Those are the two different topics we're talking about. So in regards to our facility, we're talking about the senior center, we're talking about our libraries, we're, we're talking about city hall, the aquplex, et cetera. We have facilities every day of the week that are open, not by the city, but in the community, private businesses. We have, um, local gyms that have been open for a good amount of time. And, and we have essential services like our courts that have been open. And I believe that the city can open up sooner than later and do it safely. Just like the local businesses and our other, in our city courts has done. I really believe that. And I believe that although we've all acclimated to this virtual world, there's a good amount of the population that hasn't acclimated to this virtual world, or can't acclimate to this virtual world. I've heard from a few of them, and I honestly feel for them. I, I like to see us continue in this virtual world, um, personally, but when I think about the we represent for the best, on the council, you know, council member Aslan, I know you, you've, you've mentioned that you, you would call in if we went back to in person, and I respect that. I really do, and I support you doing that. But for those of us who do feel comfortable going back to in person with our council meetings, I think we should. And I think it's the right thing to do for the public and, and our, in our service to the public. In, in regards to event permits, Mayor, my, my thought is, yes, I, I like that we're talking about the farmer's market as an essential service. I know that they're looking at early May as their first event. And I think that, you know, from my conversations with art, the, the county in Colorado's, um, what's the word, um, parameters on, on what is acceptable, which is one person per a hundred and fifty square feet works. My understanding is that art is, is supportive of that, and that is the county's recommendations currently is one person per a hundred and fifty square feet, and that's roughly about, uh, three hundred people at the city hall. I think that's very realistic and reasonable. And if there's, you know, direction to even open it up further, obviously I fully support that. But at minimum, maybe we do that, Mayor, as a compromise, and then revisit that in three weeks and, and do the data at that. But, um, that's, those are my comments. Um, hopefully, we're starting to get to some kind of conclusion as a group, but again, I just think that there are facilities that are open every day of the week, and I believe that the city can also be one of those facilities. I, I specifically feel for our libraries and, and our, you know, public who utilize our senior center and, and city hall. I, I really think that we need to open up sooner than later. That's just my thought. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, council member. Um, uh, council, council member McCarthy asked, will we be talking about the library tonight? We do have, uh, Mr. Tolman, library director on the meeting. And if council does have any questions, we are happy to ask regarding that. So I'm kind of putting this stuff together and in the sidelines, looking at all the numbers. And basically, we've been getting, and correct me with, if I'm wrong, um, Ms. Anderson. But we've been getting about a thousand vaccines done per day. Um, is that about right as of late? About a thousand a day?
I'm sorry, I don't know that number off the top of my head. Um, I can certainly pull up that slide about vaccines.
Yeah, if you want to pull that up, and I can look what it is today, but I'm pretty sure we're at about a thousand per day. So forty-two, three oh six, and, um, today it is. Oh, yeah, the partial dose administered is sixty-one, nine fifty-eight up there, and this is from yesterday, correct?
This is from Friday.
This is from Friday, okay. And I'm seeing sixty-three thousand, three thirty-four partial doses done now. So that's thirteen hundred and, oh, sorry, then I, that, those numbers are a little farther than I was expecting. I thought that was per day. Well, basically, uh, we're looking at, first off, I just want to point out, we have, it's two weeks after you get your, uh, second vaccination that you build the antibodies sufficiently. So when we look at these numbers, we need to, in some ways, look at what it was two weeks ago to be able to, uh, assess who is not just fully vaccinated, but, you know, uh, fully antibodyed, if that's a word. Um, as, when is there going to be? So, uh, let's, let's separate this out. I think city staff, we have some direction regarding that farmer's market is, uh, community market is something that is substantially different than a concert or, uh, an event with play equipment and so forth. And, uh, city manager Clifton, do you have a comment on that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council, thank you for this discussion. You know, we did not frame, uh, the discussion this evening for whether the community market, we treat it differently. We are hearing very loudly from council that you would like to have that discussion, and, and we, we, uh, want to inform that discussion when it happens, uh, and, and Sterling may have comments on this from a legal standpoint, but I just want to point out, uh, that for tonight's discussion, we, we still have lumped the events together. And I do fear that if we go too far into a policy, policy discussion that will uh, attempt to separate, uh, or to make distinctions between the type of events. One, I, I, I don't, I don't think we're, we, we have all the One, I, I, I don't, I don't think we're, we, we have all the information at hand to help you with that discussion. And two, it's not slated as such on the agenda. Uh, so, uh, I don't know if our city attorney wants to weigh in here, but I'm, I'm sharing with you that for purposes of tonight's discussion, we, we still have, and, and what is the status quo right now without a policy change, an official policy change, uh, which is usually embodied in some sort of ordinance? Um, I don't know that we have the ability to make that distinction. Uh, I might lean on our city attorney to further guide us here. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, city manager.
Sorry, go ahead, Mayor.
Oh, well, I was just gonna call for you, so jump on in.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Clifton. Mayor and council, on a number of fronts, um, there are some concerns. First of all, on the, the scope of the, uh, discussion and the way it was teed up for you here tonight. Uh, granted, it's a COVID-19 update, but we're seeking direction on a couple of options that, that, uh, were pretty specifically laid out. And so that is one concern. Another concern, anytime you start, uh, considering the treatment of, um, one particular portion of the community differently than another. I have some concerns on that and definitely would like to advise an executive session when it's properly agendized. So that's something that, uh, I would like to recommend the council allow me to advise you on an executive session if and when you want to have that kind of a discussion.
Sounds good. Okay, so that, basically, let's drop that idea for now. But you're hearing us that, uh, we want that evaluated on if that's a possibility. So, uh, let's, we'll check that one off the box for now. Um, so we were, so two weeks, uh, ago, um, ending March 27th, uh, there were 38.6% of residents fully vaccinated. Right, right now, we are at 43%. So that means we have increased, you know, four and a half percent in the last two weeks. By that note, we could be, I mean, so in two weeks from now, we'd be at about 47 and a half percent. And then two weeks after that would be, you know, around May 15th would be when the 47 and a half percent have their full, are fully antibodyed. Honestly, I don't feel comfortable opening up city facilities anytime before May 15th. And that would just be the phase three option where we go back to where we were and, you know, September, October. Aside from those, the city facilities, um, the, we'll go to the next slide. So basically, I'm saying option two, no earlier than May 15th, preferably for me, probably closer to the end of May. Uh, for the event permit options, I am strong on option two. Uh, to be frank, I think the first option is a little bit of an oxymoron, that it's, uh, COVID mitigation efforts that align with CDC and not limit the number of attendees. Well, they're specifically saying amount of space, per person, per space, uh, seems to be what they are indirectly stating by the CDC guidelines. So, and I am good with the option of doing what Colorado did of 150, what, one person per 150 square feet. But I do believe that needs to include event, the event staff. Because there's no, uh, I, to my understanding in Colorado, it's just straight up one person per 150 square feet. So that's, I guess where I'm at on those two is option two and option two, um, in that manner. Uh, Vice Mayor.
Sorry, I had my microphone out of the way. Um, in addition to looking at vaccination rates and, um, new case rates in terms of city facilities opening, I'd also like to, um, hear from the city manager and staff about, um, when staff could be ready for this. So rather than, than us just selecting a date for city hall opening, I would like it to be tied to, um, is it safe to open? And also what, what is, um, staff's, um, capacity to make that happen? Bring staff back in, um, and so forth. And did I hear correctly that, so we're not giving any kind of, um, guidance tonight regarding outdoor events?
Mr. Mayor, uh, may I jump in and respond?
Of course.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor, for the questions. I'll take the first one first. Um, for the bulk of the phase three reentry building facility, or the facilities opening up, we can approximate about two weeks, uh, and that would be at the outside to be prepared. That is in part just to get the notice out to our community. Uh, I don't think there's a lot of preparation in terms of the physical facilities. Uh, we, we, they have actually been occupied at, at, in small numbers. Uh, so the infrastructure's in place, um, the protocol's in place. So two weeks at the outside, uh, and most of that really is just to get the notices out and so forth. That, now, there's a caveat to, to that, and that is with the site-specific facilities, being the library and the recreation facilities, a little more time will be needed and there will be a little bit, uh, they, they, they will be treated a little bit differently. Um, and so more time will likely be needed on, on those facilities, even in phase three, if that makes sense. In other words, phase three is not predicated upon everything opening at the same time. It is predicated upon city hall, visitor center, and, and, and many of the facilities opening at the same time. And a couple of facilities that need special treatment, opening a little bit later. And, and so those are site-specific. Uh, to the second question, we are talking about events tonight. We've kind of bifurcated this into first, the city facilities, and then second, the event permit options, which, uh, Shannon now has in front of you. The only thing that, that we qualified, uh, a few moments ago is we're not prepared to have the discussion about whether community markets and farmer's markets should be treated differently than special events. I'm fairly certain that that will require more discussion and likely an, an ordinance and some, some form of legislation by council to change that policy. And we're just not ready for that yet. Uh, but what, what we are asking for direction tonight is, is what you see is how we treat all events, inclusive of the community market, um, going forward. And, and you have a couple of, or three options there. So I know it's, uh, there's a lot of overlap here and it is not easy to sort this stuff out in, in any, uh, coherent manner for you this, this evening. Uh, we're, we're trying to do the best we can. But I think council has been weighing in on, on the options on the buildings and then the options on the event permits. Uh, so we're grateful for that, and I hope that helps to answer your question, Vice Mayor.
It does, thank you. Um, so option two makes sense to me. Okay, let me make sure, okay, event. Option two makes sense to me, but I would like to see us set a date where, um, event planners could have some, um, reasonable assurances that they would be able to operate, um, in a way where they can, um, where it's financially feasible for them. And I would also like the capacity calculator with, um, city facilities. And the, the date that we open up city facilities, whether it's, um, May 15th or June 1st, or whatever the rest of the council wants to go with, I'm, I'm comfortable with that. Okay, so that's where I am. Thanks.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Uh, Councilmember McCarthy.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to point out that the, uh, words on the screen, uh, oh, okay, I was looking at the other slide. Could you go back to the other slide? It, option two says, based on type of event and setup, among other things. To me, that implies, is it indoors, is it outdoors? Is it an event where the crowd will tend to, uh, concentrate? Or is it a event where the crowd will tend to dissipate? And so when we talk about farmer's market versus a concert, we don't have to talk about it in terms of farmer's market or a concert. We can talk about it in terms of, is it indoors, is it outdoors? Is the crowd gonna concentrate? Is the crowd gonna disperse? As far as
Don't forget the consumption of alcohol.
And, and I agree with that. The alcohol, if, uh, people are drinking, they're gonna be less inclined to follow the rules. As far as dates, I do not feel comfortable with any date in May, that is way too soon. I suggested July 4th. Maybe it can be June 16th or June 15th. But May is just definitely, in my humble opinion, way too early.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. Well, let me, let me kind of subdivide this, make sure that we're clear about the, the situation. So, you know, opening up city facilities doesn't mean we're all going back to city, be sitting in city council chambers. This is going, uh, my understanding, this is going back to what it was back in, like, September, where people can come pay their bills at city hall. And, uh, that option. And thank you, city manager, said that is correct. And I will note too, with the in, reentry plan, that there's the phases, but then there's the tiers within the phases that are the administrative decisions. Um, and, and I'm correcting that as well, city manager? That there is some level of phasing within the phases? And that, that's also correct. So, you know, it's a matter of rolling it out. It's not, okay, we're opening up eight to five every day now. It was a few hours and ensuring that all the protocols are taken. And we, we're, it, it's not a light switch just by going to a different phase. Um, and it's not a light switch that when we open city facilities, now everything's open. We're going back to city council chambers. Because, again, there's more nuances to COVID spread. For example, that spending time with another individual for more than 15 minutes is a certain factor that is, you know, highlighted in the events part of the CDC guidelines. So, um, I just want to make sure that we, we know that that's, this isn't a light switch for all of, all of these things. Um, and to say, hey, you know, let's go back, May 30th, let's open up city facilities, May 30th. That is, and again, it's not a light switch. There's going to be a smaller rollout and we ourselves are going to decide later on when the, uh, we would go back to city council chambers. So, am I correct in that, city manager? I, I just want to make sure we're all clear here on that, even with moving to this phase, there's still a rollout process.
Yes, uh, Mr. Mayor, thank you. You are correct. And, uh, in fact, phase three, uh, which we're talking about, uh, here, uh, does not, uh, presuppose that council will meet in the chambers. I, I think that occurs later. So it is a rollout, uh, it is not all at once. And, um, I will add one more comment. In my discussion with, uh, our new, uh, county manager, Steve Peru, uh, there's a very parallel discussion happening with county facilities, uh, where it won't be an, uh, an all-at-once sort of reopening, but rather something that's very incremental. Thank you.
Thank you, city manager. So that's kind of what we're, what we're looking at here when we're talking about a date with comes to city facilities. It's when we open up for a few hours a day. We're, um, letting people pay their bills. We're letting a select number with select hours, uh, or a limited number of people during select hours into other city facilities, such as the Aquaplex. And so the question is really, when's that start of this process? When are we going to do that for city facilities? For me, I'm, I honestly am okay with doing that May 15th. When I'm thinking about what was happening last year and we had that, we were at phase three at that time. Well, we got a lot more people vaccinated, obviously now and on May 15th than we did back then. So I am thinking more like May 15th or later, whatever council would like to do, for a similar phase that was existing back in September. Where we're not, and then from there, we will continue to get updated data, obviously. I do think that we need to include the vaccination rates into our calculation, uh, moving forward in, in terms of the actual criteria, not just the transmission positivity rate, et cetera. Um, in terms of the events, um, that's, again, a different thing that I'd feel, I, I don't feel comfortable doing that in May. I really don't for larger events and for, um, yeah, there, there's risk involved in when we do. I think we do need that, uh, capacity calculator aspect of it. Where was that? I think we're at Councilmember Shimonie here.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I believe you're right. Um, Mayor, I, I appreciate your comments and I agree with you. I think that May 15th is the date that makes sense, um, considering what council's discussing. I think that there will be council majority on that, and, and I guess we'll see what council majority says. But, uh, I think May 15th is a good goal. Um, hearing the city manager's comments about needing two to four weeks, I think that's exactly, uh, the right date that makes a lot of sense for that tiered rollout that you mentioned. And there is a tiered rollout plan that is, like you said, very calculated. And it's not just opening it up, you know, it's, 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 it's implement, it's, um, incremental. And, um, I think it's a good plan. And I, again, credit leadership for putting that plan together. I think it's a very well-thought-through plan. And so I, I think that that makes sense, uh, considering the conversation we're having tonight. I feel comfortable with May 15th. And then on the second topic, I think for May, hearing what council's conversation's been tonight, maybe we go with that one person per 150 square feet, going in line with the county and the Colorado parameters. And, and then go for, then reevaluate for June at some point later in May. Um, if, whatever it is that makes sense for us to revisit this. But for me, I think that, that's what I'm hearing from council, and I think that that's where the majority will fall. So, um, I'm supportive. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Shimonie. Uh, Councilmember Sweet.
Thank you, Mayor. Wow, what a great conversation. Thank you, everyone. Um, so for the first question, I would agree for May. The Monday is May 17th, so that will be the date that I'm giving. Obviously, um, site-specific modifications when needed, and it's a rollout. Um, I feel very comfortable with that. And for the events, um, I'm fine with starting with the capacity calculator, but I do believe we should revisit this in June. And my hope and what I believe we can do is move to option one for summer events. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sweet. So, um, let's, I, I'd like to hear from all of council. Let's, uh, nail, pin this down. Who here are you willing to do May 17th as the start of the phase three rollout? And we go from tiers from there? And yeah, so I can get your opinion and understand we have three. So Councilmember Shimonie is yes, Councilmember Sweet, yes, myself, yes. Um, any, any other council member that would want to chime in to that specific date? Councilmember McCarthy.
Um, I'm a no on May 15th, but I could go June 15th.
Uh, thank you. And that would be for city facilities? Uh, because the, those are the two different things. I'm thinking June is better for, you know, events of size. May 17th, though, that's specifically for city facilities.
I'd know that for both dates, for both categories, June 15th.
Thank you, Councilmember.
I'm a no on May 15th.
Okay, thank you.
I'm also a no, uh, for, for
I'm also a no for both, just because I think we need to be clear-minded with the message we send. I, I think it should be the same date. I, I'd be comfortable with June 1st, probably, but again, this all feels kind of arbitrary to me. The reason I would push it back is because I really think we need to build into this a kill switch, for lack of a better term. If we're finding out in the next couple of weeks, things go in the wrong direction, it's, it's going to be better for the community to have that date a little further back. Because if we have to change direction, and we're doing it close to the date that we've decided upon, it's going to be much more disruptive than if we've all agreed, and the community understands, we're dipping our toe in the water even just a few weeks later, and if we have to change our minds now, it's going to be less disruptive. And that's my reasoning for that.
Thank you, Councilmember Rasslin. Could we pull up real quick? Could you go back to one of the first slides, Deputy City Manager, that has the graph of over time? Does it go all the way back to tiny print? So, I mean, when I'm looking at this, we're at 94, and what, really what I'm thinking with the May 17th is to go back to what we were doing back in September, in October, before we then rolled back to the, the Phase Two. So I, I just want to make it clear for everyone that this is, I'm not saying, oh, we're going to go right back at it, but this is the same category of where we're at back in September, October for protocol. I think that May 17th is sufficient for that level of protocol. And then, you know, we'll be talking about it here, obviously, again and again, we need to have, I think we need weekly updates at this point if we are starting this rollout phase. And I think that especially, you know, at the end, in two weeks from now, we're going to be able to, you know, really evaluate that further. So, again, I just want to make it clear, I'm not wanting to open up and turn that switch, but I do feel comfortable that by May 17th, with these vaccination rates, with levels right now, less than what it was in September, October, when that same standard was set, that, that's, that's where I'm at for that date.
I'd like to make it clear, too, that if we were to hit that kill switch, it would have to be something pretty drastic, like some of the mega spikes we're seeing on this chart, not, not something on the, the slope of what we're looking at right now. I'm, and I'm very encouraged and optimistic about our increased vaccine rates, and wouldn't, wouldn't interrupt our agreed-upon date certain lightly, to be sure, which is, which is why I think another couple of weeks would be prudent, as, you know, June 1st or whatever, in terms of just buying that little bit of extra margin to make sure that we're not going back on the community in the event that something drastic is occurring.
Thank you, Councilmember, and I, I really, really appreciate your caution with all of this. City Attorney has a comment?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, I know the mayor was going through, asking about the mid-May dates, May 15th, May 16th, 17th. I, I see some of the council members weighing in on the chat. Those need to be verbalized, because the public can't see that.
Yep, that was my next up. Thank you, thank you, City Attorney. So if we could get everyone to verbalize them, so we're talking May 17th, because that is a Monday, when we originally threw out the May 15th, that's a Saturday, so we're not really open on those days anyways. So Councilmember Shimoney? Just need to clarify what you put on the chat. Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Councilmember Salas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I put, I said earlier in my comment and in the chat, May 15th is a Saturday, because our, our facilities, you know, pre-COVID, our rec centers and library are open on Saturdays, and the library on Sundays.
Okay, so you're advocating for May 15th, then?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Well, I do think we have majority on the 17th date with all of that. So, all right, onward. We got the first slide done. Well, so now with the event permit options, let's just, I, I would like to get all council's input. Let's just stick to the capacity calculator. Will we be using a capacity calculator to determine the number of attendees allowed at an event on city property? So-
Mayor, can I ask a clarifying question?
Yes, ma'am.
Are we saying for the foreseeable future, are we still contemplating having a date where the calculator wouldn't be used any longer?
I think at this point, you know, this is such an evolving process that, you know, obviously, the capacity calculator will have to come out sometime, but we're really looking right now for what, what are we going to do for the next, for example, three months? And then we could consider taking off that, that capacity calculator with the new information that will be presented in May and June, et cetera. So for the starting events, would we be using a capacity calculator for that? So is that, I hope that is clear.
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Shimoney?
Yes, I'm a yes on that, Mayor, and I would recommend that we revisit the calculator for the month of June. But I think for the month of May, 100% yes. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilmember McCarthy?
I support Option Two, but I also think that we should say after July 4th that we won't require that, that they could have any events. If we don't do that, then these events that are being scheduled for July and August, they won't be able to plan for them at all, if we just say Option Two and leave it at that. So, but I am a yes on two.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. Councilmember Sweet?
Thank you, Mayor. I am good with the calculator for right now, and I would like to have another conversation in May to kind of see where we are for June. I do like Councilmember McCarthy's thought that we do need to come up with some type of resolution so that our event planners can plan accordingly. It's, it's getting to be a crucial time for them. So that's my recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. So I support Option Two. I support setting a date where planners could know that they won't have to use the calculator, and we could say July 4th, July 1st for that, but I would like us to revisit this within the next two weeks to a month, to see if we can move that date up.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Rasslin?
Um, I, I suppose I could be convinced to support Option Two. I, I don't know why we would put a statute of limitations on it. The, you know, we, we can always revisit this. We can continue revisiting this, but I don't know why we're using July 4th as a threshold, except for the very obvious reason. And it's just, it depends on the data. It depends on what we're finding from the data. It's, otherwise, it's just an arbitrary plan. And of course, our event planners can, can move forward with planning with, with this measure in place. We're, we're going to have parameters set up based off of the calculator that they can use. So I don't understand why we would, we would cram this into a two-month period only. Obviously, I'm very hopeful that we could go ahead and reduce the restrictions before then, but for planning purposes, event planners should be planning with current CDC recommendations in mind. And I would hope that our calculator is, adheres as closely to that as humanly possible, because otherwise, we're just making it up as we go.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Shimoney?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be really quick. I just wanted to say I, I support the conversation we're having so far about the calculator being used till July, and July 1st being that date, and then to kind of go off of Councilmember Rasslin's comment, I would add in the caveat that if we hit this significant phase of spread by the county, signified by the county, then, then we can make an adjustment to that plan, but otherwise, that we plan to open it up, you know, completely without the calculator as of July 1st. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't, honestly, yeah, that, sorry, let me, let me jump in here, Councilmember Rasslin.
I apologize.
No, no problem. This is, this is an important, passionate discussion, and I appreciate it with everyone. I, I am personally more in favor of Jul- July 4th with the court, with the capacity calculator. We should not be making any plans further than what the CDC guidelines is right now. And yes, it's from March 8th, but the CDC would have updated it if they felt like they wanted, they needed to update it. So right now, those are the standards, and I don't see why we should be now saying, we're going to be 100% open for business completely after a certain date until we have better data and guidelines. Now, what I would like to say is that we have the capacity calculator, we're going to, we use that, and that on July 4th, we are open for events with that capacity calculator in place. And when we see in the next few weeks what the numbers are doing, we can then determine what, how we are going to approach, for example, moving that timeline up through June. But this gives a succinct date for our planners to have, be able to plan after July 4th. That before then, we don't know enough information, but July 4th with a capacity calculator, that helps the planners know, this is the amount of people that I can have in this specific location for events, and what we're planning for August 16th, or whatever it is.
So, point of order, can I call a point of order?
Yes.
We have three council members that have said that, that we do not need the capacity calculator after July 4th or July 1st. I don't care about if it's the first or the fourth. And now, Mr. Mayor, what you're saying is you're changing that. So you're saying that after July 4th, but still have the capacity calculator. So I think we need to make sure that what people are agreeing to is consistent. And Mr. Shimoney, are you saying after July 4th, we would not need the capacity calculator anymore? Okay, to my count, go ahead.
For events, sorry.
Yeah, just for events. So my count is that that's four council members that agreed to that. If I'm incorrect, we can go through it again.
Yeah, I was going to go through it and cap it off, Councilmember, because there was a little confusion with how people, some of the council members, maybe I didn't catch the clarifications. So the, really, the discussion right now is, okay, I think we, we're all seeing in July, you know, after July 3rd, so July 4th on seems to be a pretty clear date marker for something. The question is whether that is going to be for events without a capacity limit, or events with the capacity calculator in place for now. And just remember, for now, we can change that in a few weeks. We could change that in a month with more data. So saying after July 4th, here's what we got, or July 4th and later, here's what we got, and we can make changes at it, but we can at least plan on the events being at least a certain amount after that date. So I guess here's, here's what we're going to do, if you're good with it. After July 3rd, events can happen. The question is now, capacity calculator or no limit of attendees? And remember, we can change this. So I would like to, maybe we can just do a quick roll call, and then just yes or no's, because we're going, we're getting, yeah, deep into it. So if Ms. Salzberg or Mrs. Spovar could just do a roll call real quick, and we will just get all, okay, Councilmember Shimoney has a question real quick.
Sorry, Mayor. I'm just a little confused. Are we saying, so I understand that after July 3rd or whatever, we're talking about, you know, whether or not to have the calculator, but are we also saying that we are allowing for events with the calculator as of May 1st? Or is that something that we're, we're not considering?
May 17th.
May 17th, we talked about our facilities. So that's one conversation. For the events, you know, the farmer's market, looking to have their first, I think, May 2nd. And so I assume that we were talking about May for the calculator, and then July, potentially getting rid of the calculator for outdoor permitted events. That was my understanding, Mayor. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, let's, let's turn it to the Deputy City Manager to anchor us down here. Ms. Anderson? And city staff, what are you wanting from us tonight for the event permits? And what is the timeline you're looking at for when, what we should be discussing?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. Currently, right now, we allow events to have 50 people. And so what we are asking council is, based on what we're seeing right now, with our numbers, the fact that we're at a moderate transmission level, do you want to change that 50? And so that would be, that, that would be now. So certainly, if council doesn't want to make any changes now, and you want to revisit it in the future, we certainly could decide that. But if you want to do the capacity calculator right now, and then revisit that in the future, let's just focus on if we want to change the 50 to the capacity calculator, and then we'll come back to you, and we can talk about what you want to do next, and when that change occurs. Does that help?
That is extremely helpful. Thank you, Ms. Anderson. So let's stick to that, and again, we're going to be doing these more weekly or bi-weekly here, so we can move along. We really need to know what we're doing now and in May for moving forward. I am in favor of moving to the capacity calculator as opposed to the 50 that is currently set for events.
I'm a yes, Mayor.
For outdoor events, I am okay with moving to a capacity calculator, but only if we are not stamping an expiration date on it right now.
Sounds good. And that's, I think that's what we're looking at, is we're not, we're not doing that firm line in the sand at this time.
Mayor, point of order, we have four council members that expressed that they do want to do that, so you can't just arbitrarily say we're not doing it. I, I think maybe the city attorney should step in here and formulate two separate questions, and then we could go through the list if we need to go through it again. But unless we do that, we have four council members that have said they want to do away with capacity limits after July 1st or July 4th.
But that question was never posed. It was simply, it was simply assumed or presumed by Councilmember Shimoney.
Let's, let's rein it, let's rein it in here, folks. Let's have a city attorney jump in. Can you, yeah, get it, get it, yeah, get us anchored down?
Yes, I appreciate that, Mr. Mayor. I, I understand that in the course of the discussion, a date in, in the future was raised, and a question about the capacity or the capacity calculator was brought up. I, I think those are two separate questions, as Deputy City Manager Anderson has correctly indicated. The question that, again, no vote here, but by show of support, and I think it's easiest just to do roll call requests, Mayor, to find out who supports using a capacity calculator now, and if you want to revisit that, revisit that in the future, you can revisit that in the future. Mr. McCarthy, does that address your concern?
The second question is, should we allow unlimited access and, for permits after July 1st? And that's a question that I'm asking for the council members to weigh in on. And if they vote yes, or, or thumbs up or thumbs down, that's fine, but I would like to have a decision on that by council.
Well, my, my question on that, Mr. McCarthy, I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for letting me jump in again. Mr. Mayor and Ms. Anderson, is that a question that was asked in the, in the slide? I, I don't, or was that just raised in the discussion? I think it was just in the course of the discussion?
Yes, Sterling, it was raised in the course of the discussion.
Okay, so what I'm saying is- Okay, so what I'm saying is I believe you need to answer first, what do you want to do right now? That's the first question. And then talk about a second question separately.
That makes sense to me.
Okay, let's do roll calls. Shall we go to ca- capacity calculator now?
Would you please state what the first question is explicitly?
Yes. The first question is, are we going to go to a capacity calculator for our current permitting events? Right now, it's set at 50. Are we now moving it to a capacity calculator as of now? That is the first question, and I'd like roll call on this.
Sorry, Mayor Deasy?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Daggett?
Yes.
Councilmember Aslan?
Yes.
Councilmember McCarthy?
Yes.
Councilmember Solis?
Yes.
Councilmember Shimoney?
Yes.
Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
And at the point of order, I do not think there is a second question. That's, that's not what's on the agenda. We, we shouldn't be discussing it right now.
City Attorney, if you could come help us with the, yeah, with order here to help inform us about what we can and should be discussing right now with that.
Right. So thank you, Mayor. What is on the agenda? Didn't include, you know, that question, a second question about the future and whether or not it should be opened up. However, it has come up in the course of the discussion. The, the COVID-19 update, the way it's posted on the agenda is rather broad. And if there's a desire by council to address that, you could, but it's not necessary. I guess I'll put it that way.
Well, with so many, with multiple council members having stated this and the discussion around it, I think that we should probably get a roll call vote on this as well if it is within the purview of the currently agendized item.
But we haven't had a discussion on it. If, if we're, if we're gonna, if we're gonna provide direction on this, then I have, I have some comments and a plea I would like to make to this council.
Okay, well, then let, so let, here, let, let's see if this, Councilmember McCarthy. We will be bringing this up here in the next week or two. July 4th is a long time away. We have the ability to discuss this further when we are more prepared and can think it through more clearly. It's been a lot of things we've been discussing related to COVID right now. And I was even confused with what the rest of council is, where they were standing on it. Because I was not sure what we were talking about, course capa- or capacity calculator, July 4th or later, or exactly what was going on. But I, I'll, is that something that we could discuss a week later?
All right. So if I take your proposal, to summarize that you're suggesting within the next two weeks, we will have a discussion about the possibility of opening up July 1st or some other date without restrictions. I'm, I'm willing to accept that if other council members are.
Thank you. Yeah. And I think that that will then give us more information, data, and it's not a decision that has to be done tonight. If the other council members who were in favor of full opening up after July 1st, if you're, if you're willing to slate that for the next COVID-19 update and discussion. I will, Councilmember Shimoney, followed by Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. And, and councilmember, I know this is a passionate conversation that we're having. And I just recommend that we all still use the chat to communicate how we want to communicate, Mayor, and for your sake, and trying to facilitate this conversation. I, I really think we can make a decision tonight, Mayor, for the sake of our event, event planners and, and revisit this if we need to. But I, I, I think that there is a majority support for July 1st being that date where we remove that event calculator. And I'd be curious what the roll call vote would be on that. And I would welcome Councilmembers Aslan's comments. But I do think we should have that vote tonight for the sake of the event planners. It is getting down to the wire for event planners to have the time they need. And I think, I think we owe it to them to have that, that vote tonight. And I think we can, Mayor. I don't see why we couldn't. Thank you. So I would say yes for July 1st.
Thank you, Councilmember. Vice Mayor Daggett?
One thing before, and, and I, I, before we go any further, Mayor, I'm going to jump in.
Yes.
You have less than a majority of council members that wants to weigh in on that future issue now. And again, I know it's a broadly posted item, but we are talking about some things that are fairly, I'm going to use a big term here, magnanimous when it comes to, or, or of great magnitude, that's the wrong word. Magnanimous was the wrong word, of great magnitude. And I, I do believe these are things that the council should actually vote on in a special meeting. And when you talk about something that significant, I, I think putting these on, even if it's a work session date for a special meeting for an actual formal vote is something that I would recommend.
Thank you. And the, I, thank you for saying that, City Attorney. I, I do think this would be better suited for an actual vote on a non-work session, given the very large interest this is of everyone. But I'll turn this to Vice Mayor.
And I was going to say that I think the community and ourselves would, we'd be all better served if we took up this discussion again in another week or two weeks.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Aslan?
Thank you, Mayor. Obviously, I think I've made my preference on this known. But I think it's important to understand the reasoning. I think it's, I think it's really inappropriate for us to, we, we were just talking about whether or not we should put a date certain on changing our restrictions. And now we are suddenly having a conversation about having a date certain when we end all restrictions for outdoor events. I, I, I just think that that's frankly, with all due respect, I think that's insane. Well, why would we, why would we hobble our future decision-making process right now for something that is still three months away? I understand that there are big events on the line for the month of July. But there is a bigger pandemic occurring right now, and we need better data as we go into this. By initiating a capacity calculator, we are giving our event planners direction and parameters around which they can plan events. We shouldn't, we, that's, that's not just for the next month and a half, guys. We, we, we need to be able to be in charge of this conversation on an ongoing fashion. And with all due respect to, to Mr. Shimoney's comment about, you know, directing the conversation, I feel like you're trying to strong-arm this council into making decisions prematurely by, by bringing up conversation topics that were not intended to be engaged in tonight. And I, I really do think it's important that we wait on this. There's far too much at stake. And we need to keep our options open and not slam a guillotine down on our ability to react to a, a very fluid pandemic situation. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Well, I do appreciate this passionate discussion, and it's legitimately so. So I appreciate us having, hashing this out, putting our hearts on our sleeves. I, I find this valuable conversation. So with that, I think at this point, City Manager, please chime in. But you all have what you need for the questions posed to us tonight for city staff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council, for a thoughtful discussion. We have clarity on opening our city facilities on May 17th. I'd like to take the opportunity real fast just to clarify for Councilmember Solis that the reference to the Saturday opening does have relevance, but later on, that will be more of a site-specific rollout subsequent to May 17th. City Hall will be opening on May 17th, which is a Monday. And we will report back to you as to the site-specific openings for recreation and library and perhaps other facilities. With respect to the events, we're hearing unanimous support to implement immediately a capacity calculator in lieu of the, what has been a capacity of 50 persons. So the 50-person thing will go away. The capacity calculator will be the means of determining crowd size moving forward. I believe we have heard that council would like to revisit the discussion of setting a date to lift capacity restrictions. I understand that there are divergent viewpoints on that, but I believe we've heard from a, a majority of council that that should be coming back to you ostensibly within the next two weeks. Maybe that's the one thing that we need clarity on is, is because if, if, if that is the case, we'll tee it up and, and we will make for a very informed discussion. But I think we've heard from a majority on that, but Mayor, I, that might be one item to double check on. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I would like to see this back in two weeks. We won't have much more data next week than we do now to make a data-driven decision. I don't think the CDC is going to change the event regulations in the next two days. So I would like full two weeks, let's think this through, get our ducks in a row, have a good presentation on it and get some very clear questions from City Manager and Deputy City Manager. So that way, we can keep a good, tight conversation that is productive and leads to, yeah, well, what's the, what we would like to see in the majority. So I am seeing from Councilmember Sweet, yes for me in two weeks. Councilmember McCarthy, two weeks is fine. And Councilmember Shimoney has a comment.
Thank you, Mayor. My question is actually for Sterling. You know, Sterling, you mentioned that we should vote on this. Can we vote on this in two weeks? Or does it have to be a regular council meeting, which is either next week or in three weeks? Does that, does it make a difference?
No, it can be posted for a special meeting where a vote can take place.
Okay, so Mayor, I'm, I'm fine with two weeks if that's what the majority would like to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Shimoney. And I am seeing Vice Mayor Daggett saying yes on that as well. So that sounds, that sounds good. And I will point out, out of the two or, two out of three directions we just gave, two of them were unanimous, council. So that's to get this up in two weeks and have a capacity calculator. So with that, I, I, I think we have clear direction for city staff. So thank you all for the lively discussion, and this brings us down to agenda item number 14 for public participation. Ms. Pobar, do we have anyone for public participation?
Mayor, we do not.
All right. Thank you much. That then brings us to our informational items. I will go down the list here and see if you got anything to, to update us on. Vice Mayor?
No, I do not. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Aslan?
That's okay. I'm, I'm good tonight.
You, councilmember. Councilmember McCarthy?
Nothing tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Solis?
Thank you and good night.
Thank you. Councilmember Shimoney?
Nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you, council, for a passionate conversation and deep breaths. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Sweet?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have just a quick update on our downtown. There's a lot of activity going on, transitions. We have Matty G's that opened, Alejandro's, a Miramonte sales office, Plante, which is by Martens, an electric bikes, a Flagstaff location, Mr. Shimoney. We Scotty, which is on La Rue, Aspen, La Rue and Aspen, they do alterations and crafts. We have some businesses that have reopened, Rendezvous, Weatherford, and opening soon, the British Chippy. Creollo is vacant, but there is a lot of interest in the space. So I guess I just wanted everyone to know that our downtown is thriving and moving right along. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sweet. Well, I got a couple of things here for you. So Nurses Week is coming up May 6th through May 12th, and I want to make it a big thing. And with Councilmember Sweet has reached out to Terry Mendeska with the Downtown Business Alliance. I'm speaking with a Associate Director for the Nursing Program at NAU. And, and I would really love to see us get behind our nurses for that week. Businesses giving discounts. I would like to be able to give, to be in Wheeler Park to give out an appreciation award for those who have honestly saved so many lives in our community or, and also have educated the next group of nurses. This isn't just, oh, you know, COVID ICU nurses, it's to appreciate every, everyone, our nurses, especially with what they faced this last year. So I would like to, just want to let you know, I, I'm really looking to have this big. And if you have ideas for how to do that, it would be really great because our, our nurses need to know how much we appreciate them. So May 6th through May 12th, mark your calendars. Let's, let's make sure our nurses know how much we care. Secondly, I have the, I was speaking with Ms. Drum and about potentially having us counsel do little videos with city staff, kind of like, you know, the, the talking heads bits, but with presentation slides. Basically, I was, I've been thinking about all of the divisions and so forth, the great presentations we've had, that it would be really nice to just take small snippets about, of it, talk to staff, have like a little interview where it's based on interest myself. And then, hey, if we're talking bicycles, I think I know which council member should be on that meeting with city staff to discuss. But our staff do so much good work, and I feel we really need to communicate it. And this would be a good option to really showcase all the hard work and things that we're doing. So I'd love for council members to be a part of that, our city staff, and we can really highlight and show the public what, what we're all about. So those are the two main things I had for you this evening. And with that, oh, City Manager, do you have anything for us tonight?
No, thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Well, I was going to tell this joke before this meeting to lighten things up, but I, I, I'm just going to have to say it now because I think that it should be, have a little levity here. I'll save it for later. It's been a late night. Councilmember Shimoney, did you have a comment?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say really quick, this is important. We had a couple good meetings, full day meetings with, about the Rio flag last week. And we, we met with Colonel Balton and General Owen from the Army Corps of Engineers and also the BNS team, including Paul Christina. And I just want to express gratitude to staff who helped to orchestrate that, Mayor to you and Councilmember Aslan for your leadership and support in these efforts. I thought the meetings went really well, and there's a potential follow-up meeting occurring in two to three months at, at the BNSF headquarters in Texas. And this is a really important conversation for the community with the Rio, being the, the city's top priority, one of our top priorities. And I think we made some really good progress at those meetings. So I just wanted to give the community and the council that update. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Shimoney. Well, without further ado, it's 8:30 and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.
Good night, everyone.